Call the meeting to order. And before we go on, we've had regrets from councillors Calvin O'Gall, Roderick Murphy, and Gis Rea. So we have an agenda. Anything to add? Hearing none. Motion to approve.
It's lawful. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Contraminded? Carried. Conflict of interest? Anybody have any conflict of interests to declare? Hearing none. Next thing is we have a presentation. We have a presentation from Shannen Muse, who's EMO Coordinator, and it's on comfort centers. So, Shannen, the floor is yours.
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to take a second to let you, let council know that next week is Emergency Preparedness Week. So EMO Argyle has gone ahead and this year what we're doing, we're doing the contest on CJLS again. Scott Muse, the IT worker for the municipality, is going to be on Facebook every day posting some information about emergency preparedness as well as running a contest. The Canadian Red Cross has given us a kit, an emergency preparedness kit, for our contest. And one of the things, also Peggy and myself, as well as Wendy Devoe from the Red Cross, we're going to be trying to do some presentations around the municipality. And we keep promoting civic signs, so that's what we're going to do. Having said that, this leads me to the reason why I'm here tonight, and it's all about emergency preparedness. And one of the ways that the municipality prepares itself is with comfort centers. So, I have a brief presentation for you tonight. What we do have right now in the municipality of Argyle, and I'm not going to name them all, they're in front of you, and those are mostly fire halls, which are around the municipality, as well as the Quinnen Community Center. You will see that we've also added on the bottom is the Mariners Center. So if there's anything major that we have to evacuate, let's say 100, 200 people, then we don't have the facility, especially if there's a power outage, in the municipality to house that many. I mean, we have schools that we could use, but if there's a power outage, of course, we can't use it because there'd be no power. They don't have generators. So those are the list of the comfort centers that we have presently. So comfort centers, what we hope to have are comfort centers that reflect our all-hazards plan. And we went through an all-hazards plan at the last EMO planning meeting here at the municipality, and we added two new hazards to our hazard, all-hazards plan, and one of them was water shortage, and the other one was gas shortage. We're not talking about gas shortage tonight, but this is one of the realities that the municipality faces once in a while. So priorities for water shortage issues are access to drinking, which is potable water, and that's usually an easy fix. The municipality only supports bottled water when it comes to drinking water. So whatever is available through the municipality, through any fire departments or whatever is available, other than potable water, we do not support, and we really don't want people to get sick or anything like that. So the other one is access to non-potable water, which is non-drinking. The third one is showers and washers. As we know, in the last few years, in 2016 and 18, we've had water shortage issues, not only in the municipality, but surrounding areas. So what do we do to support the community with those issues? So what I've come up with is a three-year plan for you to look at. It's, of course, not written in stone. It's flexible, but we hope that you will support this in some way financially, so that we can make the comfort centers what they should be in terms of our all-hazards plan. First of all, I've divided it in three years, and first of all, we have year one. What I recommend, because this covers a very large area, is the new Ilbrook Fire Hall. What I would like the municipality or council to consider would be a hookup for an outside water dispensary, and what I have there is a $1,600 quote. So the ones that I've received quotes from, it's pointed out here. They already have showers in their plan and washer hookups in the plan to build the new building, and it services a very large area. The second thing that I propose is retrofitting the well on the Dr. Moreau Road in West Pumnico. And this was used a lot by the residents. We were very fortunate that the owner of the property allowed us to use the well. The West Pumnico Fire Department dropped their own pump in there, but they used the pump, and we don't want to use it, so that, you know, that they're going to, they are going to have to buy a new one eventually, because it was widely used that year. So from a quote, we have $1,777. And the third one, because Wedgeport was very dry, and the only way that we could get non-potable water was to use a tanker from TIR. So we proposed the installation of a water station in Wedgeport on a property owned by the municipality of Argyle, and we're looking at the existing school. They're going to be building a new school. The well there is, I've checked with the janitor, and the well there is a dug well. It's 20-plus feet, and it services the school, but in terms of water shortage, we probably would need a drilled well. So from all the calls that I've made and from talking to a lot of people, we've basically said, you know, $13,000 for a drilled well, and that's a little bit on the high end. But, of course, you never know with a drilled well, what you're going to find, where the water is, what the recovery rate is. Building, you would have to have a building, probably, which is a small 10 by 10, and I've checked with local contractors, they say the maximum would be 4,000. You don't think it would be that high, but the maximum on the slab with the door. And from a quote from a local plumbing electrical company, as you can see, it's $4,000, for a lot of the hookups for the pump and everything else. I've brought Jonathan LeBlanc here with me tonight to answer any technical questions that you might have, because, to be honest, it's a little above my pay grade to answer all of your technical questions. And trenching to and from the building would be 500. So that is a proposal for year one. That's a total cost of around $30,000. It doesn't add up to 30, it adds up to around 25, but I've put in a 20% contingency plan, because you never know what you're going to come up with. Year two. Quinnen Community Center presently has a drilled well in the back of their property. It was built in 1978. We don't know what the recovery rate or what the output is from that well, why it was never used. I've been in contact with the people, well, a family member of the drilling company, and they can't find any data, and Quinnen Community Center can't find any data. So to assess that well, it would be a cost of approximately 2,000, and if it was, if the recovery was good, the water output was good, it would be another approximately 4, 5,000 to set up that well again. So if you wanted to drill a new well, it would be, again, 13,000 plus hookup to the community center at 2,000. One of the things that, right now, we've talked about non-potable water, right? Sources of non-potable water. Secondly, what we felt was needed and based on the demand from the community would be showers. The Quinnen Community Center was the first one at the get-go when I asked, what do you need for your comfort centers? And they came to me and said, we would really like showers, and that was one of the things that people needed during water shortage issues. And they have a cost of 31,000, but they're willing to pay half of that. The community center is willing to come forth with 15 of that amount, or 1550. It is, I checked with the people from the community center, and it is accessible, the showers that are being planned. East Pumnico Fire Station, from a quote, 15,180, accessible to the public and to anybody with mobility issues. And one of the smaller fire halls, the Amerahill Fire Station, is looking for some money to upgrade their facility. They do have a shower. They do have generator backup. They do have a drilled well. It is not owned by the, it is shared by somebody. So they have now obtained a propane stove. They're really working hard to make their facility a comfort center, so. Total for year two is 50,000. Not to say that we can't move anything from year two into year one, or something from year one, two, into year three. This, as I said, this is not written in stone. Year three. Last but not least, one of the things that was identified was that the comfort centers needed showers. I did a little bit of investigation. The commercial-grade washers from Leon's are 948 plus HST. There's three facilities that have asked, or three fire halls or community centers that have asked. One is Quinnen, and they've asked for two, and East Pumnico, one. I should mention here that last year, in 2018, East Pumnico did install a washer in their fire hall, and in 20 days, it was used 72 times. So that's pretty, pretty high, instead of traveling to town. One thing that doesn't really have anything to do with water shortage, but it is an issue with a comfort center, we're talking about comfort center upgrades, is that the Wedgeport Fire Station needs a larger generator. And if, and I don't know what the, what council plans to do with the generator here, but we've discussed it with the fire station and fire hall in Wedgeport, and it would have enough capacity to do what it needs to do there, because they need a larger generator. They have all the things that a comfort center has, except a water output, a water station. I mean, they have showers, they have washers, they, I mean, it's a very nice facility that would serve as a comfort center as well as a shower. Surratt Island Fire Hall, they did have a quote for showers, but because of restructuring the building, it was basically way out of our league, but they did ask for propane stove. So in year three, I'm sure that there will be other requests that are coming in. I mean, I've put 20,000. So whether that will be designated for that year or not, that's a good possibility. So once, if council approves some funding, I'm sure that other requests will be coming down the pipes. Any questions?
I have a question. The, when you're looking at showers, you have a quote of $31,000 for one area and 15,000 for another. That's a big difference between two quotes.
It is, it is a big difference. Sometimes it's a matter of the building itself and the renovations that go into the building to create an area for the showers. And could be with the contractor, it's a little difficult to say, but, I mean, they're willing to pay half, so, so which brings down the cost considerably.
Anybody else have any questions?
It's not a question, it's more of a comment. The emergency measures management organization and the municipalities of Shelburne, or I guess municipalities in Shelburne County, Queens, and Yarmouth Counties, were all asked to meet with the minister back in the fall of 2018, with the objective of listing much of the things that Shannen has listed here around, you know, being proactive around the water situation that has happened twice in three years. So the minister was very eager to receive a letter, he did receive a letter, and we received a response saying, thank you for the letter. The information that we have is they're not, they have made a decision on the amount. One of the things that, one of the areas that we may actually be able to get funding from is there has recently been a release, I guess, or a relaxation around the surplus around 911, and that money is to be earmarked for safety-related purposes, and there's a good possibility that that or other funding could aid us in this project. But we won't know that before the budget is set for this year, so. And keeping in mind that this is something that is going from Queens County to Yarmouth County, so how much, how much money is available and how that gets divided amongst many municipalities, we just don't know yet. But there is the possibility of funding for a portion of this.
The other thing I might want to mention is that you may notice that I didn't include Kemp and Lake Vaughan in any of the requests. Those two fire departments are service both Yarmouth and Argyle, so any request would be done in conjunction, and I know that the Yarmouth municipality, as part of the proposal to the province, put in some funding for that area to update, especially in terms of water shortage.
Anybody else?
Just the email you were referring to, Alan. I understood when I read it that they're planning to try to get another meeting together with the minister.
Yes, that's correct.
So that's positive. He's following up anyhow.
There's no more questions. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
It's very good, and I'm sure we'll be looking at it seriously as well.
Thank you very much.
Adoption of minutes. EMO Planning Committee meeting minutes, February 6, 2019.
So moved?
Moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Contraminded? Carried. And the 139th Annual Council Meeting of April 9.
It's moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Contraminded? Carried. I don't see any business arising. Financial statements. You're on.
All right. Enclosed is the financial report to March 31, 2019, showing a surplus of $115,171. At this point, most of the revenues and expenses are in and have been recorded, however, we are still waiting for a few more, therefore, the surplus will change, but not significantly. We are showing some revenues higher than budget in a few areas like sewer and water. The bulk of this surplus is the Wedgeport Sewer operating levy, which only began this year and was not budgeted for. The East Pumnico Water Utility user fees came out higher than budgeted as well. Sales service, this is the Wellington turbine. This is an item that we're actually waiting for an actual number on. You'll see it's estimated at $50,000 in this report, however, we did receive confirmation today that the number is actually $56,763, therefore, a little over $15,000 more than budgeted. Service to other local governments is showing higher than budgeted at year end, which the bulk of this is due to the CIO staying on as interim manager at the airport longer than anticipated. Other areas showing surplus in the revenues are return of investments and penalties and interest. These line items are estimated, usually estimated and budgeted conservatively, so they're showing a little, they actually came out higher. There are a few revenues that came out lower than budget, but not many, one of them being the detransfer tax. This amount fluctuates monthly and yearly and has been significantly higher, as you all know, than budgeted for numerous years, therefore, decided to increase the budget this year, however, we did not receive as much revenue as hoped. Extraordinary revenue came out a little under as well. We did not collect as much day camp revenue, fees, revenue, as we anticipated, however, you will see that in the day camp expenses, they were lower as well than budgeted. These numbers are based on the number of participants each year and changes each year. The HST rebate on council stipends is also lower due to the regulation changes that occurred in January of this year. To look at some of the variances in the expenditures, legislation came out over budget, which is due to the CPP adjustment that we had to make, otherwise, there would have been a significant savings there. There were some cost savings in IT, with the bulk being in software maintenance and capital expenses. Grants to organizations is over budget due to the $5,165 grant that was given to the Club Social De Zil for their emergency funding, and also the $11,698 of additional funding given to the Mariners Center. Both of these amounts were previously approved by council. EMO is over budget by $12,200, which is due to the cost of supplies given out during the drought of last summer. Property inspections is under budget by $18,400, mostly in conference and training, fire inspection services, and maintenance for the fuel, and fuel for the mowers and equipment. Planning and zoning was new to our budget this year and was budgeted a little conservatively, therefore, showing a surplus of just over $10,500. We had budgeted an amount for the operations at the Industrial Commission as a contingency that was not used, therefore, leaving housing and RDA with a surplus this year. Tourism is over budget this year in order to purchase the post for the directional signage project. This was previously discussed and approved by council earlier this year. And lastly, recreation services is showing savings in programming, day camp expenses, and repairs to capital projects. And I will, if there's any questions?
Well, you covered it good.
Thank you.
If there's no questions, we need a motion to accept the financial statements as presented.
So moved?
Moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Contraminded? Carried.
The auditors, do we have the date?
Yep, the week of June 17.
There's just one other item before we move on, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, is typically what we do at the end of the year, even before we have audited statements, we make a decision to make a motion to transfer to reserve. Basically, we have, as the Director of Finance indicated, we have an operating surplus of 115. We expect that to go up and down, but we're comfortable in suggesting that an additional $65,000 could be transferred into the Capital Reserve. If you recall, the rules, the accounting rules changed recently. The province requires 100% of any surplus to be transferred to a reserve, one way or another. We do not require a motion if it goes to the operating reserve, because the expectation is, is that's where it goes. However, we would require a motion to transfer an amount to the Capital Reserve. So keeping in mind, once you put that amount in the Capital Reserve, it is earmarked solely for capital purposes. We have quite a few capital commitments that will happen over the next five years, so it suggests respectfully to council that a $65,000 transfer to the Capital Reserve would be prudent, and if it's something that you're prepared to do now, we could do that now. If you wish to defer until we have a little bit more time and information, obviously, that number would be even more accurate. But whatever the case is, if we, if a surplus remains behind, it will automatically go to the operating reserve.
So the surplus could change, then, with some of the expenses that we haven't paid, or?
There's not many, but there are.
But there could be some that's going to.
They usually come in the month of May.
Yes. It's up to council, what they want to do.
Uncomfortable, and if there happened to be more, you wanted to go in capital later, you'd just do another motion there, right?
That's right.
Yeah, my only concern is that I wouldn't be, I wouldn't like to be in a situation where we said it was 65, and then for some reason, there was an adjustment that dropped the surplus to like 55. That would be the only concern I have.
Right. But the possibility of that, to make that much difference, is hardly.
Not much.
No.
Significantly.
We have about a $15,000 receivable that we're going to be setting up.
Okay.
So that's only, so that's just going to put that to 1/3.
Right, exactly.
And there'll be, there'll be other expenses, but 65 is conservative. I think we'll be okay.
I'm prepared to make that motion.
I'll second it.
65,000 in the Capital Reserve, so 2018-19 operating budget.
Okay. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Contraminded? Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. Yeah, we did approve, okay, yes, we did approve the acceptance. Strategic priorities, there's nothing there. Grants allocation and approvals. There's two pages, and that's the average of all our submissions, all the councillors' submission of what they wanted to do with the spring grants. So, so do we approve this here?
Yes, I mean, the objective is to go through this list. There's a couple of things that we want to make sure that council is aware of that might adjust your allocations here.
Okay.
But typically, yeah, we, what we typically do is, and as Ailey has put up on screen, is the prior year approved amount, I realize that's hard to see from there, but you do have the same information essentially in front of you, just in a slightly different format. So what we wanted to do is show you the last year's approved amount to recipients, and then the requested amount this year, the average that you have calculated, and everybody submitted their averages, and then the council approval amount, which may or may not be the average amount.
Okay.
So there are a couple of homework items that I think we need to kind of address specifically, and then we'll look for your guidance around those, and then we can dive in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Okay.
So if you'll permit me, there is a request on here from the Bay of Fundy Sea Kayak Society.
I saw that in.
So typically, we had set money aside for that particular event, because it's one of our, I guess, for lack of a better term, signature events. We have provided for 7,500 under a separate line item. Therefore, if council wanted to, they could take this application out of its calculation, because it's actually in another line. We didn't want to presume that for you, but it's always been that way, and so we just, we made sure that we had it budgeted in another line. So the first, that first item, if you wish, so the key is, is you can still debate what you want to give them.
Yes.
It's just we have that money somewhere else.
And I was under the impression, and I think I asked that question of Ailey, like when I saw it in this list, right, whether or not that should be in here or not, because I was under the impression that we already had money set aside for that because of the request that it was.
Right.
But, you know, we have so well, they have applied here through grants, so.
Which is the. Which is the right thing to do.
Which is the right thing to do.
So we didn't wanna presume anything, that's why it's on the list.
Okay, okay, yeah.
So, so that item, I guess, we would require some guidance from council, whether or not you want to show that as a special events grant, which is already, there is a seven thousand, five hundred amount set aside for that.
In this upcoming budget, yes.
Correct, so, so if you're, so the first question is, if you're comfortable with that, we would take it off this list and then you just, you just bought yourself a little bit more room to contribute somewhere else. However, I don't wanna, I don't, I don't wanna be in a situation where I'm denying you the debate around whether or not it should be seventy-five hundred or not.
That's right, and, and that would give us an extra thirty-six because what happened in the averages, it, it, it brought it down to thirty-six. I know I, i- i- if the money's set aside, I think that would be a good idea to have that thirty-six and be able to put it somewhere else in the other grants that we have there. But that's just my, my view on that.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Because money's already set aside.
Yeah, that's right.
And, and you know, I mean, I'm sure we can find a place to put that thirty-six, that, that would help others.
And so what it can do, if you permit me, is, is it'll take that seventy-five hundred. We can have a discussion on what the actual number should be, but, but we, but it's not gonna influence this discussion.
No.
Right, that's, so we're taking the thirty-six hundred out.
We're, we're taking it out of here, but oh, we're not gonna, we're not gonna use it in.
Well, we can use it in other places.
Right.
In other places.
Yeah.
But, but we can't approve this budget, this, this, this right now if we're gonna do that because all of a sudden, do we have to each, each counselor go back and redo what we did so that you can get a different average? Or how, or we can discuss it here?
Yeah, we're gonna make the decision here, is what we would typically do.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Could, can it go into fall grants?
That's another possibility. I, I will say that there is at least one other organization that missed the deadline for March and is fully expecting to do a September application. Now, uh, our policy is clear, however, if somebody was, uh, if somebody applied and, and got denied funding for March, they're actually not entitled to apply again in September.
Oh.
Um, I just remembered.
But, but they, they were denied because they were too late?
No, I'm sorry, that's the general rule. If somebody, if somebody didn't, like those, those that who didn't make the, the deadline.
Right.
That's okay, because they, they actually didn't apply.
Okay, right.
So if you apply and get denied, you can't apply again in September. So the, so the case around the Sea Kayak Society.
Right.
They, they, according to the policy, they would be denied because they applied for the March.
Of course, yes.
I just, sorry for the.
There is, there's one place, um, I was hoping that we put more money into is the Yarmouth County Trail Development. That goes right through our municipality and I, I was hoping that there would be more money allocated to that one.
I agree with that totally.
Where's that one, sorry?
It's where down, down towards.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I totally agree with that.
That touches all our.
That's used a lot.
Yeah.
That's a moving area.
Yep.
So that we could put money there.
Yeah, for sure.
And I still say we're missing a lot there as far as trail activity around here. And I'd love to be able to see that trail going right through Yarmouth.
It's going into, it's gonna be.
Pardon me? They've applied, they're, they're, they're talking about.
Finally.
They, you're not sure it's gonna happen, but they are looking at the possibility of having it done.
Applied provincially for the laws, is that what you mean?
Yes.
That is amazing, there's so much potential there.
Yes, it is.
So they ask, the trail asked for five, right? So could we put that up to their five?
Five, am I right?
Yep, me too.
Mine by me?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It'll take part of that.
We, uh. The tribe, the tribe has spoken, and so, so, so that's good. So, so there was another housekeeping item, if you'll permit me.
Yes.
Is, uh, there is a request here from the Club de Zozasio de Quinnen. So two issues, number one, we're, we still have the community hall grant program. So technically, that could be denied straight out because they don't qualify, qualify for this grant.
No.
However, you just had a presentation from Jeanine, and one of the options was for, uh, well, one of the many options in Quinnen was for a drilled well. This request is for a drilled well.
Yes.
So I would suggest that their request is actually an emergency management request. And if, and if you're looking at developing a plan for comfort centers, regardless of how long it might take you to do that, I would suggest if this is something that is interesting to you this year, um, that it ought to be pulled out of this, uh, consideration and moved into potentially the list of projects that Jeanine is proposing under water conservation and the emergency management planning. So, and as it turns out, that number is lower than her quoted amount for a drilled well in Quinnen. So, um, I, I kinda like the Quinnen quote better. But, so I guess my point is, is again, this is one that we've allocated eighteen, nineteen hundred dollars to.
Yes.
It, it technically is EMO and should come out.
Okay.
So, and, and technically could be denied straight out because it is, it is not eligible under here. Again, we put it there because we didn't wanna presume anything, we wanted you to know.
Okay, so we, we would give them the money, but under a different project. And we would take it out of this one here.
If, if you decided to do a comfort center investment,
Then, then that would start it.
I would suggest you have somebody ready to do it.
Exactly.
And so you could, if that was an interest of yours, look at her three-year plan, Jeanine's three-year plan, and see whether Quinnen's in year one. It doesn't actually matter because Quinnen's in year two. Um, I would suggest that the, the Wetchport option, while we wanna hit Wetchport as quickly as possible, there's a lot of uncertainty around where the school's gonna be and some of that infrastructure could be built into a school infrastructure. So, um, so that may or may not be the right one to do in year one, presuming that you wanna do that. So anyway, Jeanine is, is, is not picky to what goes first, but she's identified Wetchport first for a reason because of the, the, the water situation hit them the hardest as a community. So that's what I would have to say about that number. Um, so whatever the wishes of council, uh, I guess the first question is, it, it really ought to be zero here regardless. And then, so the next, the only other question is, is whether it goes to EMO or not, and.
So that's the ask, that was for fifty-eight hundred, ninety-three dollars.
Yeah, and it's nineteen hundred that, that the average. So that will give us another nineteen hundred to, to Wetchmore's as well.
Yep.
Is there any halls that needs to be emergen- I, I, we can't see it anymore, the details of, of what, halls or anything that has to be?
It's the only one.
It's the only one?
All the others are fire departments.
Okay, so I have another idea. I study this a lot.
She's running on tonight, I tell you.
Well, I study this a lot, I love to see where it's more, mostly needed. And, uh, the Women's Auxiliary, the Yarmouth Hospital, that's another place where it touches everybody and they do a lot of work for, for the hospital, so, um, I don't know your thoughts on, on the hospital. Or is there somewheres in our community that we need it more?
I think it, oh, sorry.
University of Sanin, I don't know if you wanna mention that as well?
That was the third housekeeping item, I'm getting there.
Okay, good.
But Kathy's taking, every time I put money on the table, Kathy takes it. It's an amazing experience right now.
I love it.
There's just one other item, if you, if, I'm sorry, I don't, I, I really hate to get in the middle of what you're doing here, but.
That was fine.
So there's just one other one is the, um, on, for information, uh, in today's agenda, the municipality of Clare approved the entire amount from the Université Sainte-Anne for the, um, the online, uh, the presentation that you had while I was away. Um, and so that is also in this list, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that's on this list. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that changes any behavior whatsoever on your part, it's completely up to you. But it is listed here, it's on, it's seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven, and the amount approved was considerably lower than that. But I just, I just wanted you to, like, you should have all the information on that one, that's. And those are the only ones, I believe, that were housekeeping. And then, sorry to get in your way there, Counselor Bork.
Oh, Counselor Bork is thinking here now, where she's gonna put that money, like she smiled when you said that and she, yeah.
And, and the other thing is, is that you were able to distribute fifty-two thousand, five hundred. Your averages come out to forty-nine now.
Exactly, I was just doing that, there's twenty-six hundred dollars there that would go.
Right, so I think that's everything and then I'll, and then you can have a conversation finally.
Ching.
So the, the first thirty-six hundred, the first thirty-six hundred was, we said to the, uh,
Well, we go, we, we go up to their re- request. Their request was five thousand and we allocated twenty-three hundred or twenty-two.
Twenty-seven hundred to bring it to five.
Oh, okay, okay, so it doesn't use the whole thing. I must have looked at the wrong line because I thought it wasn't gonna bring them up to the thousand, but, uh, five, five thousand, so. Nine hundred remaining here. So we got nine hundred, nineteen hundred and twenty-six hundred. Twenty-four. So really, we have. We have forty-four hundred dollars.
I got fifty-four hundred based on what you guys just did.
Fifty-four is correct.
Fifty-four is correct.
You have fifty-four hundred?
That's what you guys have left to play with shit.
Eighteen, oh yeah, that was twenty-four, it is fifty-four.
Yeah, fifty-four left, however.
Yes.
These are averages, and any single one of these can be changed.
Can be changed.
So I just wanna make sure that that's made clear, so. Okay, now, now where, where do we?
Are all the festivals at fifteen hundred? Cause that's usually what we do, right?
Yeah.
Other than.
Is it Le Cadiv, you consider the festivals at fourteen hundred?
Yeah, and then what's that, a thousand, oh nevermind, sorry, yeah.
Kent, Kentville Bicentennial is under festival, it is, it's not a festival, it's like, it's a, it's obviously a, a one-time event.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, for Kent, East Kent, who's celebrating two hundred years.
Well, Village asked for a thousand and our average was nine hundred, we should just put that up to a thousand. There's little, little things like that that have to fix up.
Société Boîte, Touristic Boîte, and they requested seventeen hundred. And I, and I know the reasoning behind that because they're gonna be, it, it's to hire somebody and they needed the seventeen hundred to make up the difference of what they're going to be.
All right, well, put that.
And I think we ended up with fifteen hundred. So I wouldn't mind seeing that go up to what they, to what they, they, they need to, to cover.
For sure.
Which one is that for?
Société Boîte. Société, Société Historic. Société Touristic de Boîte.
So it would be just above the Wetchport Tuna Tournament Festival.
We're gonna bump them up to seventeen hundred, is that what you're thinking?
Two seventeen from.
Yeah, bring that up to seventeen.
I, the West Pubnico Improvement Society, now they're a new improvement society, new society down home trying to, uh, make the villages of West Pubnico and Lower West Pubnico look better for everyone, for all the tourists coming in. I see it's twenty-three hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-four cents they asked for. The average came out to nine hundred. Uh, I'd like to see that one go up to fifteen hundred. And then I'll be quiet, let another counselor.
Well, like Kath, that one's a fine with me, but Kathy's suggestion to the hospital too. We never dealt with that.
But, uh, did we take care of the trail?
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
All right, sorry.
Yeah, the trail is taken out of that.
I misunderstood that, okay, cool.
Yeah.
So is that all right to put that one up to?
I don't know.
Okay, I'll be quiet, that was my.
So Kathy, yours was to help the Women's Auxiliary for the hospital, right?
The hospital, they asked for two thousand, so if you could put that up to two.
What's another thousand?
Yeah.
Considering what's going on in healthcare, I don't think we'd have any negative feedback for that one.
It'd be crazy enough to help them out.
Exactly.
So after those changes, you guys have thirty-six hundred dollars left.
Thirty-six?
Did you get the six hundred for West Pubnico?
I did, yeah.
Okay, that's great.
What about Nikhil, they asked for two thousand, our average is nine hundred. They're doing a thirtieth.
Anniversary.
Anniversary, it's a one-time.
Yes.
Kind of thing, could we bump that up?
You sure can. What would you recommend, Counselor Albright?
Well, we give fifteen hundred to the other festivals.
At least, I would say that we should go at least to fifteen hundred like the other.
Yeah.
Perfect.
From, sorry, what was it?
It was nine.
Nine, and to fifteen, okay.
So it's three thousand now.
Three thousand?
Yep.
Wetchport Tuna Festival. That one, they asked for three thousand and average is twenty-three hundred, you might as well put it right to three.
Yeah, that's a big event.
That brings a lot of people in.
We usually do, yeah.
Who is that?
I just sound like a squeaky wheel.
That's all right.
Oh, yeah.
I heard your wheel.
I go, I only have one in my, one in my District Six, so I'm gonna ask for five hundred more dollars.
Which one's that for?
Argyle Historical Church Restoration Society.
You wanted to go to twenty-one hundred?
No, five, like, two thousand.
Oh, two thousand, okay.
It's at fifteen, right?
Yeah.
So how much we got left now?
Minus five hundred, eighteen hundredish.
The School of Karate Makashi, they, they asked for four hundred, we gave them two. I wouldn't mind seeing that one go to, to the four hundred. That, that, that involves a lot of the kids from the area. The, the karate club that they have.
So you guys wanna bump that up to?
To, to, to their, yeah, to their ask of four hundred.
What do we have left?
What, what's that bike again, what's that all for?
I have no idea what that is.
Sixteen hundred, you know what I'm saying?
I can shed a light on that. It's a voluntary group in Yarmouth, they picks up bikes for free.
Oh, right.
You can bring me a broken bike, they picks up for free and then. And it's, uh, they, if you wanna just donate a bike, they take that, fix it up and give it away for free for someone that needs, kids.
So it touches in Yarmouth County?
Yeah, they're sitting, they're operating up the police station, uh, across from the.
Hebron.
Other boat club.
Yeah, that's right, Hebron. I, I, I would, I would bring this, we only gave him a hundred. When I see a hundred at an ask of two thousand, to me, sometimes I think it's better to give up nothing, but I would give it, I would, I would bring that up to five hundred.
I think it's a very close, more effective consultation.
Yes.
Especially for the kids.
You guys have twelve hundred dollars left.
And the Farm Academy, they asked for, uh, five hundred dollars. Average is three, can we put that up to five? And that was for, um.
They're the ones that, that want that, that.
They want pamphlets out.
Pamphlets to hand out.
Yeah.
For, um.
For, uh, uh, women.
For women, uh, not necessarily it's.
No, it's, it's.
Trafficking, trafficking, sex trafficking, yeah, human trafficking, yeah.
Human trafficking.
Yes.
Human text, I don't know what they call it these days.
It's human trafficking.
Human trafficking.
Okay, but.
Do you have it? What were you gonna say?
No, no.
Let's start looking at some of our.
What was our New Horizon looking for, money for?
I'm trying to remember that myself. Yeah, I'm just gonna get it.
We have a fifteen thousand something dollar ask, we give two hundred or three hundred.
Commo's Hill Beach?
For, for where? The Ark.
The Ark.
Oh.
So for the, the SAR?
Yeah.
They were looking to update their electrical system and to purchase a heat pump.
And we averaged the eleven hundred?
So isn't it, is, just to the clarity, uh, really, is, uh, so would that be at the Knights of Columbus? Does it say which building? I, I think they're at the Knights of Columbus, uh, which could be considered a community hall ask.
Yes.
Could be, but I'm not sure, we'd have to dig into that one, I think.
Throwing it out there, Commos Hill Beach is our only beach, they're asking for three thousand, our average is eighteen hundred. They recently had drama, I don't know if you guys remember, about a year ago or something, and, uh, I think there's been a community, uh, get together to try to bring it back to life, so I don't know. It's food for thought, it's a good one, everybody likes that place.
Agreed.
Yeah.
How much we got left, Ailey?
You guys have, uh, twelve hundred dollars.
Put it on the beach.
I would do it.
So Commos Hill Beach Committee, okay, you go.
Take care of that.
La Village Historic Academy, la Nouvelle Coûts, they asked for a thousand, we gave them nine hundred.
Didn't I mention that one? Didn't I mention that one? You guys have no money left.
Oh, we have no money left?
No.
Yeah.
No, that's all that's.
You have to, you have to steal.
That's. That's the story of our life.
Steal from someone else.
We're we're broke.
Um now, uh a lot of times, and I'm just and I'm just trying to help you along for efficiency. A lot of times what happens is, uh particularly on the um on the items, uh on the page two, the last part. Oftentimes, uh some of these um really don't provide enough funding and would be insulting to the request.
Or insulting, yeah, I know it's uh.
So.
Shark's scramble.
I think it's it's an opportunity for you to say, well, we actually can't support all of these. And it might be a way to support some of them better than what you have. Um I mean, I I don't, I don't necessarily uh personally want to go line by line, I mean, I wanna help you from an efficiency perspective, but it's a political exercise.
If it was me, I'd take every one that's under four hundred dollars and eliminate them to zero.
Some of them were just at two hundred dollar asks, though.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
One was.
Southwest Peddlers Association.
There was some fours and fives.
Four, okay, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of them are insulting. Like the shark scramble, they asked for a thousand.
Exactly. Asked for a thousand and we give them a hundred.
Yeah.
So what one of these would be uh, so take that hundred and put it, where was it that we were missing?
It's the village.
The village, put it there, the shark scramble hundred, put it, the village.
Mm-hmm. So the village historic, we'll give it four hundred thousand, okay.
So there's there's.
Yarmouth Hebes Association, six thousand dollars, and we averaged a hundred dollars, so we can't do that.
Yeah, I know.
I would add that to Relay to Relay for Life.
Relay for Life, I would take all those little hundred ones and put for Relay for Life.
We got a couple of new requests, uh two of which are curling clubs in our neighboring.
Yes.
Municipalities. Um obviously, there's a lot of conversation around curling clubs and 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 the fact of the matter is currently. The Mariners Center Expansion Committee is 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 really putting that at another phase, not necessarily looking at that directly. However, there's obviously some um requirement for uh refurb refurb uh refurbishment or whatever. So we have the, we have a new request, I think this is would be the second time the Yarmouth Curling Association asks for money. Uh the first time, I think we gave a a fairly substantial bit because we were, I think it was a condenser or something that had.
Yes.
Broken, and so I think we were at one-third and it was like eleven thousand, it was a, it was a very considerable amount, sorry, I can, as I can recall. And then we have the Barrington one, which is a new one, um so I don't know if you wanna think about those two together, like you wanna do. Like I don't have any information around how many residents from Argyle participate in one or or the other.
Well, I would say there's probably more. Um out of the two curling clubs, there's probably more from Argyle that would use the Yarmouth one than the Barrington one, that's just my, I don't know.
There's a lot of people in our in our municipality that goes to Barrington.
Area, that go to Barrington.
On there, yeah.
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 Anything from the Argyle River or Bautic River or whatever.
Would go Barrington, would go the other way.
Would go Barrington, yeah.
And. I I I'm almost embarrassed to say this, cause it sounds political, um but it should be noted that the municipality of Barrington contributed last year. To the airport.
Yes, exactly.
Yarmouth, which aided us all.
Exactly.
And that amount was a little less than ten thousand dollars. So while it is new and sometimes it's hard to introduce new into the mix, um I just, I wanna make sure that you're fully informed. Um I know I'm treading a line here, I'm not trying to influence your decision, I'm just simply trying to inform your decision.
No, I wanted to know that, that's good for the power.
That's good. The the Nova Lumberjack Society, is that, is that the same, um we had a presentation last year from the, they had a lumberjack um in Barrington?
I believe so.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, we gave more to them than we gave to the, to the uh curling club.
And one I was looking at, and I know, I believe by what I heard here this evening, it's a lying item here now, and maybe I'm wrong, but the Bay of Fundy Sea Kayak Society. Are they a for-profit?
No.
They're not?
No.
Cause you can have societies that are for-profit as well. I was just wondering.
It, um I I'm not aware of them being anything other than nonprofit. They've been, this would be the third or fourth year that we would have supported this particular event, most of which is marketing. Um I think the the history of it, and I'm just saying this because.
Yeah, no.
Because it was, it preceded uh preceded your your uh election was uh. Uh it's 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 hosted almost entirely in the municipality of Argyle. And um it is not one that gets a lot of funding from the other municipal uh partners. So our amount is unusually high for that type of event, it has been. Now, I think they host it every two years, so we don't actually do it every year.
Yeah, cause I believe the participants, they all pay to.
They do.
To partake in it, I was just wondering.
Uh we have received financial statements from that organization.
Funny thing you ask, I had it marked down here.
Which we we're we're happy to provide you.
Thank you.
If you wish to look deeper.
Yeah.
My my memory is that it's it's a fairly break-even situation.
Okay, yeah. Sounds good.
Certainly, we'll get that.
Thank you.
If you're interested.
So is it, are we gonna clean up some of the the smaller numbers there?
I think so.
And divide it up and give it to the curling clubs?
I would agree with that.
Mm-hmm, I would too. There's one hundred dollars, so under the Southwest Pilots Association, they were only looking for two hundred.
Yeah.
I would put, I would put two hundred there.
I know.
Yeah.
I.
So where are we gonna take them?
I can't, see, I I, when I shrink it down, I can't, read it, it's too small, so when I expand it, I I lose the ask to to what we're giving.
Oh, you're in the different, yeah, right here, okay.
See, I can't see it when it's it's small enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, so somebody else is gonna have to sort that out.
So what I can do is, without actually mentioning the names, I can mention the amount requested.
Yeah.
And the average.
Yes.
And then you can make a decision whether you want that to be a different number.
Mm-hmm.
So the first one is Ask Fifteen Thousand Two Thirty-nine, given three hundred dollars. Um I would suggest that's that's a far kind of like miss, um so that one, that one really, that amount of money is not gonna, no.
Which one is that, sorry, Ellen?
It, the fifteen-two thirty-nine, Ask Fifteen Thousand Two Hundred Thirty-nine, right in the middle of page two.
The Ark, yeah.
That's, we're not giving them with zero, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I tried to see the museum, asked for five thousand, gave them two hundred.
Yeah, that would be another example of one that missed the misses the mark. Um you know, I, yeah, we do actually fund the museum. Uh actually, uh we fund three. One, one that we co-own and and well, we own entirely, and the others are in Westport and Pabnicco.
And they don't request funding from any other municipalities, yeah?
To the best of my knowledge. So if it's the will of council, you just found another two hundred dollars?
Yeah.
So that's three and two, and you said we already had one, I think, no.
No, no, you guys have five hundred dollars from that three and two.
We have five right now, okay.
Yeah. Or did you guys wanna bump them up to two hundred, the paddlers?
I would bump it up to two, they asked for two hundred, give them two hundred.
Honestly, there's not a big ask, so, yeah.
Okay, so you have four hundred dollars left.
Is there any more, Ellen?
Well, Southwest Nova Biosphere asked for a thousand, we made a hundred. That's another one that kind of stands out.
Another another hundred there.
Yeah. And did we, yeah, we we addressed the shark scramble.
Yeah.
Uh the Scouts, they asked for five hundred, why don't we give them their five hundred?
You guys wanna do that, say something?
I don't know, I I I guess I'm missing what we had thought, I thought we were looking for money to give to.
To the curling clubs?
That's what I had understood, looking, see if we could up the.
So are we gonna give to both or just to one?
Well.
I, it's, I suggest split, yeah. There's so little money here to to get, to get the item.
So the curling, so so right now you've got six and two for a total of eight hundred given, and how much do we have left?
We have five hundred left.
We have five hundred left.
Yeah.
Seafood and Wine Extravaganza, they asked for fifty-five hundred, we gave them two hundred, that's another two hundred, really.
Great.
Yeah, so seven hundred.
It just doesn't make sense.
And if you'll permit me to just point out that the Kentville Bicentennial Society, I, the 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 logic around the. Uh what was it, there was another celebration here, there was another one that we bumped up. Oh, Nikhil, so we bumped Nikhil from nine hundred to fifteen hundred.
Yes.
To consider it as a festival because it was a one-time celebration. The Kentville Bicentennial Society would also fall in that same definition.
Exactly, sure.
So if you're if you're gonna continue that logic, you're short a hundred there.
Cause we gave them fourteen.
Yeah.
Exactly, and I I would say probably the.
Give them fifteen, so it gives us six hundred left, so three hundred more each to each.
At least give them fifteen. Their uh their festival is not gonna be until next year, but they're applying ahead of time and they could apply again like. Next, next year for the same event.
Thank everybody. Well, I was interested on this one.
Yeah.
So you have six hundred left, so are we gonna give that to the curling clubs, is that the plan?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Divide it up.
But I can give it to curling clubs and.
Pick and call of the day?
Yeah.
And then I approve that, we approved the suggested grants allocations as amended in the last twenty minutes.
I'll second that.
Yes, move the second there. Any other discussions?
So so permit me just.
Yes.
On the motion for us, for for budget purposes, um it would be good if we could say the total amount in the motion, which I believe is.
Are we close, like fifty-five?
Fifty-two, fifty-five.
Fifty-two, five, fifty-two, five.
Fifty-two, five.
Sure, fifty-two.
I'll do my intention, I'm sure, I'm sure of it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second there.
Question.
Question called, all in favor?
Aye.
I, don't mind it, carry it. Good. So. Item nine for decision. RFD Municipal Building Budget, April twenty nineteen, there's a. A four-page attachment. And if you wanna go through that with, you've all had a chance to look at it, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And it's a request to upper budget, really.
Yes, uh up and sideways.
Yes.
Technically, uh so as, I mean, I'm not gonna go down the historical road of of missing the budget mark initially, I think we've we've discussed that. Uh and so leaves us in a position where um our. I'm just getting to the right page here, forgive me, uh so it, to the point where our uh our lead consultants, the architects. Need a little bit more understanding of what's happening, so. Where we started with the community was, we set a range of between two point four and two point seven five. That was before net zero energy, and it was assuming that the entire amount or virtually the entire amount was coming out of capital reserves.
Yes.
Okay, so this project has changed quite drastically since we've gone out and done that. So we had changed the budget to three-eight-six-five, and that was, our hope was that that would include the costs of net zero. Uh it did not, and so we're we're in this situation where we're going to make uh significant changes to the design of the building. Which will be required to bring us in the budget range. So my, I have a couple of concerns based on the work thus far. First of all, I think where Wild Salt is bringing us around the the complexity of the building will save us money. They are changing their material strategy, so they're backing off on some of the higher-end materials, so their initial philosophy was. To uh spend more at the beginning and have it last longer, right? And so they are changing that strategy slightly to have not as high-level quality materials. Uh however, obviously not the lowest level of 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 uh quality. So there is, and and a couple of other changes would include um the way that the roof looks and and the way that the structure is, it's going to be simplified. There are gonna be some elimination, anyway, that's a lot of detail. Essentially, they're confident that they can bring it within a budget range. However, one of the things that were, that concern us is that part of the way that you would save money on a building construction is to reduce the square footage of the building. And so staff has raised this as a, as I think a legit concern, that, you know, we're, we are actually uh. If I look at the activity of the municipality right now, it's as busy, if not busier, than it's ever been. And so the possibility of other downloads and other things that may come from the provincial and federal government may require us to have that space. And we don't wanna be in a situation where we built something and suddenly it's too small within three or four years, so. So knowing that the residents and staff and council are very sensitive to the budget around this building. It uh really pushed us down a road that brought us to, okay, well, we are sh- we are showing one point one million dollars of of federal gas tax. On this project right now. Um we have done some investigation. Uh with with the provincial and federal counterparts around uh how how do costs uh qualify for gas tax? And we've we've done some very good news in that area, so we're also, my my other concern is that while three point eight-five is a very decent number for budget. Uh there was some misunderstanding about what that included, I think council certainly felt like it included everything. But according to the architects, it was construction, uh not construction and what what I would call soft costs, which is. Um construction inspection, HST, and other other non-construction-related costs that happen in these kinds of projects, so that can be a big difference. So we felt like we wanted to kinda split the difference in a way, so our our goal was to protect municipal dollars. And I think this recommendation achieves that, in fact, it actually improves anything that we ever said to residents around the project. It does mean that we're putting one point six million and not one point one million in federal gas tax money. Uh of course, when this information comes to my attention, the first concern I have is, okay, well, this magnificent gas tax account can't be without an end.
Mm-hmm.
So you have attached a, I have attached for your uh information, a ten-year projection of what the gas tax could look like.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, a lot of that is in your control and uh, but it but it shows that even with one point six, we we would still. We, we would still have, uh, sufficient gas tax to do other projects that we have on, on the list. So I realize this is a bit long, long-winded and I'm, I'm, I'm almost, I'm doing the long-windedness, I think, less for council and more for those watching. Uh, so, so ultimately what we're saying is to, to, to kind of br- bring it back to brief. Is we're proposing an increase to the, to the all-in budget, which would include, which it would include the soft costs in our portion of HST. From three point eight six five to four point two one five. The FCM Green Municipal Fund will be at approximately four hundred and sixty-three thousand. So of the four point two, almost five hundred thousand is paid for by the Federation of Canadian Municipalities because it's a net zero energy building. Another one point six will be applied to the project because it's a net zero energy building. So the remainder is two point one five one, coming from capital reserves. That's lower than we ever said.
Right.
It will cost the municipal, um, taxpayer. So I, it is for that reason, um, that I would recommend that while we're increasing the top line, we're actually decreasing. The municipal contribution towards this project. I would recommend that change to give us the comfort to be able to build something at an appropriate size. I believe that that should be sufficient and the architects have a responsibility to work within that number. And based on the changes, I can't see why we can't get there. I hate to say that out loud because there's always uncertainty around projects of this magnitude, but we've really made a lot of big changes to the project. So, so my recommendation would be to, to revise the budget for the amended construction, uh, to four point two one five. And to increase the federal gas tax allocation to one point six. And I would also ask the council hold our architects accountable by asking for the, the consultant to provide a revised design and breakdown of the budget costs considering the amended budget for your approval. So basically you're saying, here's the number, you break it down, right? So it will be their responsibility to break it down, how much of that is construction? How much of that is soft costs, how much of that is, you know, X, Y, Z, right? That's their expertise, that's their responsibility. So a couple of things I also wanna mention around this, uh, increase in budget request is that it does not include any costs that we've already incurred. It would include, however, any architect or engineering costs of redesign. This includes that number, so that, that, so you're basically giving us permission to in, in, to, to, to invest in that as well as part of the, of, of the project. I just wanna be very clear about that. And, um, I guess I'll stop there and, and if there's any concerns or questions or comments, I'm, I'm certainly open, open to that.
Questions, anybody?
More comment that I'd like, I'd like to explain. We all know what gas tax is and we've mentioned a lot, I mean, there's a lot of people out there that don't know what we're talking, that wanna talk about gas tax. Would you explain?
Absolutely.
How we get, why we get gas tax?
Right.
And it's a new, well, it's not really new, but it's, it's pretty recent. New revenue that municipalities receive.
Right, I'm happy to do that. So it was a federal government decision about, I'm gonna go with seven or eight years ago perhaps, maybe even longer than that. That, uh, revenues generated from gas sales across the country would be set aside for municipal projects. So it is a federal program that is, uh, uh, that, that gets, and, and the funding is, is a permanent funding situation. So how, while it is permanent, we have agreements that say, you know, from two thousand fourteen and two thousand and twenty-four, this is your gas tax agreement. So in two thousand twenty-four, we'll have to, the province will renegotiate with the federal government at the time regarding a new, uh, ten-year or whatever year program. So the program funding is intended to be permanent. I would suggest that with this current, um, uh, federal government, uh, they made a one-time commitment to top up our gas taxes. So that would reflect a strong commitment to funding municipal governments directly. So the, the thing about the federal gas tax is, it's one of the only funds that doesn't flow through the province. The province negotiates on our behalf, but the money comes to individual municipalities. It is federal money, it is not paid for by municipal taxation dollars. Uh, it is paid, it is taxation dollars. So I always want to spend that money over anything that we save that is municipal money. Because, uh, we get an annual amount of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, that we can apply to a list of eligible projects. Not every project is eligible. So because we're doing net zero, it increases the eligibility of this fund to this project. And from the, to the best of my knowledge, um, the incremental or additional costs associated with the construction of this kind would be one hundred percent eligible. And all that would be required is the architect to say, yes, that was an additional cost that we had to put into the project. So that is, so, so it is important, I think, for people to understand that this is federal money, not municipal money. But it is municipally controlled.
Any other? If not, we have a suggested motion, if anybody wants to make that motion.
I'd be willing to make that motion, that we revise the budget for administrative building construction, construction inspection to four million two hundred and fifteen thousand. And to increase the federal gas tax allocation from one point one to one point six million.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a few points to make. First of all, um, the report you gave us prior to making this decision, uh, how that was, in my opinion, well done and informative. And it spells out the facts, I found how we got here, why we got here. And quite likely why we needed to move forward with this. I feel as if, if that building is what we want, um, the suggested motion is the logical thing to do. And I can see why you would make that motion to second it, however, I have a few concerns, um, mainly. Our CEO raised that staff would have concerns regarding room. And staff is something I've felt like we really have to keep into consideration moving forward because although we're elected officials, we're not gonna work in that building. Nowhere near an amount that staff will, and you have to keep in mind, um, we have to make the right choice. However, I've heard, politically I've heard both sides of the spectrum, I still hear, why do you guys need a new building? You don't need a new building. And I mean, that's just ludicrous, anyone who says that hasn't walked in here. Was it like two years ago, I walked into our deputy clerk of the Times office and it was like raining on his computer, like ruined his computer. I mean, the basement's seven feet tall, is it not? Is it seven? It's not eight.
Most places.
Yeah. It's what?
Yeah.
Yeah. So. For the naysayers that go that far, the, the, there's no validity to that. However, I've heard, um, you know, no matter what it costs, build it right. I, I, I see validity to that point, I think I personally am a little more frugal in that. And I find we're tipping. There's been a series of unlucky events, but we're tipping closer to that side of things than, than don't build a new building. And I'm starting to get a little uncomfortable with the numbers. Because I feel like there's an opportunity and again, I, I. I'm not often the best counselor in speaking of this because I'm not part of the building committee and, and I know there's hard work being done there. And as I said, this suggested motion is, is the best motion you can make and the, the research was done, in my opinion, um, to the best. It could be given the circumstances if we wanna follow this route, but. I'm under the feeling that if we just had a rectangular building that had all the space and needs and necessities that staff needs, but on a more simpler platform. We could stay within our, our, our budget that we originally had. Now, the complications that would follow, going back to the drawing board, I get, are, are serious. However. I'm thinking I'm falling more along those lines than moving forward with, um, what's happening here. Now, I'm, I'm open to hearing why I'm wrong, I'd, I'd love to be, you know, told why this is the better of the ideas. However, I feel like if we simplify the building, um, every time you add a ninety-degree cornered building, every time you add a cornered building, you add costs, right? It's a beautiful building and I think, given the fact that it'll be visual, I, I do feel like it has to be a visually appealing building. However, um, I'm sensing from the community, it's a bit more on the extravagant side than it needs to be and it's raising concerns with me.
Aren't we changing that though?
Yeah, I can, I can perhaps.
There's things I don't know, I love.
Yeah, yes. Let, let's, uh, first of all, um, it, it absolutely, under its current design, will not meet our budget parameters. End of story, so you're absolutely right. And any community member that's saying that it looks extravagant, the tender proved that it is extravagant. So there's no, there's, there's no argument, uh, around that particular piece.
But before you keep going, I'm aware that you're making changes to, to make it.
Yes.
Simpler, it's, my concern is, are they gonna be enough?
Yeah, well, here's the, here's the, and, and that's a legit, uh, concern. Let me just raise a couple of examples of what is happening that might alleviate that concern a tiny bit. So first of all, the, the architect negotiated with the lowest qualified bidder. And based on certain minor changes, was able to drop the original bid about, I'm gonna say about seven hundred thousand. Okay, now that's obviously, um, it still didn't meet the budget at the time, which is why we're saying we need more than just changing, switching this out for, for, for that. Um, the major changes that we're doing include, um, to your point, the elimination of all those com- complex corners. So the, the three roofs, the dorm, what dormers or whatever you wanna call, some people call them that, I, I don't know if that's the actual, uh, formal, uh, name. Those will be eliminated. So many of the concerns around the roof and the complexity around the roof will be eliminated. It will be a, a much simpler roof design. Um, also, we will be bringing in the council chambers from its outer kind of, uh, the ankle, I guess, for, for lack of a better way to describe it. Uh, of the building and try to bring it back on the foot. So that, the complexity around the council chambers presented a significant, uh, premium on the price. So if we bring it in, it will bring down the price considerably because it will simplify the construction. The materials choice is much different, um, we are making changes to the landscaping, making things a little smaller, a little bit more compact. Like I said, every, every little thing, uh, does make a difference. I, I'm very, I'm, I'm confident that those changes will make a big difference. We are eliminating things like bathrooms, that, like, there were duplications inside the, the, uh, in the design that we are eliminating. I feel comfortable that we could be still within the original budget range. However, I'm not confident that, that we could hit the three point eight six five, which is why I'm suggesting the, the, uh, the increase because of the.
In case you're.
Correct. Now clearly, our objective is to be below that number. I think what we presented was, let's make sure we don't have to come here again. That's number one, that's one of the reasons why we've done this. And, and obviously, we wanna work it down to the, to the lowest number while providing us a quality building that, that isn't as extravagant as what a lot of the pictures out there are showing currently. And I think that, you know, it's, it's a bit of a chicken and egg situation, right? If you don't tell the architects what they have to work with, they can't design you something. And so what we're trying to do is say, okay, look, you have up to this number now. Make sure you fall no higher than this number or there's gonna be trouble. Uh, but really, we wanna be at the three eight six five. And so we wouldn't have to come here again, hopefully, uh, to, to address that. So I, I'm, I know that's not gonna address every single one of the concerns that you've raised.
Well, um, but you, you have addressed some, and as I mentioned, given the circumstances, given the architects that we have, given what the building looked like, given what we're changing it to look like. The report you pre- prepared and the suggested motion you suggested using gas tax and, and the way you, you've, you've suggested we use our funding is what I would do. I mean, it's, it's a logical thing to do and I get why you would wanna make that motion. However. I, I'm really throwing a wrench in the gears here is, am I too late in speaking up and saying this? In a sense, yes, I mean, yes and no, these concerns were raised throughout by all of us. Um, however, I feel like we're, we're maybe going down a road where things get a little more complex. And I know we're trying to cut it down, but I do have worry about the, the re-tendering. You know, I'm nervous about that, whereas if you. Again, I've heard the point that build it right, no matter what it costs, because this could be a focal point in Tuscan, we should, we should have something that you're proud to look at. But at the same time, I've always been a little more frugal in that and I'm thinking, when we're using this gas tax, it's additional up to, close to four hundred thousand that we're suggesting, is, is that correct? Almost four hundred thousand today?
It's, it's a five hundred thousand, thousand increase in the gas tax, but it's a two hundred thousand decrease.
Increase in capital reserves.
In, in the reserve, so it's not just putting all that money.
And, and I respect the decrease in the reserves and, and I mean, it is gas tax, however, it's gas tax that could be allocated on other projects.
Correct.
So I mean, it's not, it, it's free money, but it's not, I mean, we could be using it in other places, so. Again, square footage is my main concern, staff needs room to work with. And I'm concerned with downsizing, uh, we, we have to be sure staff has the right, the right tools to do their job, however. Extravagant decorations aren't necessary, I don't know if that's the right word I should be using, but. There's some things that are necessities and some things that are wants and I'm afraid we're gonna lose, they get blended together. So I, I can't support this motion here. I don't have a whole lot of options, what I would suggest you would do differently, other than completely looking back at the drawing board. Uh, but I have, I just have concerns with the numbers is all. I just wanna make my point.
And when are we going to be getting a look at the new design?
Once Wild Salt knows the budget that they have to work with.
Oh, so they haven't changed the whole.
They have, they have changed a lot of, like, to the point of extravagance, most of that is completely eliminated.
That's, that's for me. That's right.
Um, they will be coming back with a much more, uh, basic design.
Design building, which, which is basically, I think, your concern. And I think hopefully what we see, I, I agree with you, uh, you know, council along, I, I agree with that. I've, I've said that all along, that do we need all these fancy, you know, because that's, that's the main concern that I've heard ever since that plan went out to public. Why do you need such a fancy building, right? But maybe what they're gonna change might, might be exactly what you're, what, what you're saying, where, where it will be more of a basic building. We can't, we can't change, I don't think we can, we can downsize as far as the size of the building. I think it's small enough and I, I, I would say probably that some of the offices are just barely big enough as it is, right? And we need all the offices that we, that we're putting in there, right? As far as the budget, and I've, and, and that's something I've always said, when people say, well, you know, when we started this. We started with one point seven five to two point whatever, if I remember correctly. One point eight five, I, I know it was low. When we first started. But we've increased because we knew that that was never gonna do it. But when people see that we, we were talking about in the range of the two million, two point five, whatever, and they see something come out and we say, well, our budget is three point eight five. Well, that's not what you told us. But we have to be able to explain why the three point eight five is there without increasing what we said we were gonna spend from our own coffers, right? That, that's what we have to be really, really careful in, in, in selling. It's, it, it doesn't come from, that, that three or four million doesn't come from the actual reserves of the municipality. They have to know that. And you're right, it's still money that we could use somewhere else. It's, regardless of how you look at it, it's money that we have, right? Whether it's gas tax, the only thing that we don't have is that FCM Green Municipal Fund. If we don't build, if we don't build a net zero, then we don't get that, right? So that, that's free money. The rest is. You can't, you can't say it's free money because it's money that we could use somewhere else. However, my view is. However, my view is that we're using it in the right place. That, that's just my view, right? So anyway, that's what I had, that's all I had to say.
And the original budget, when the first budget came out, the net zero part wasn't in there.
Yes. Yes. No, it wasn't.
And that's a huge, that's a huge piece.
Of course.
It's a huge chunk of it.
Yes.
And like you said, we do have some funding for that. I understand what you're saying. The numbers keep changing. It's, it's, it's almost like a target that you don't know where to shoot at, and it's, it's, it is, it's hard to kinda, it's a hard pill to swallow. But do we start from scratch? Do we throw in the towel and, and start all over again? I don't know if that's the best option either. I think in the long run, I think we should listen again to see what Wild Salt has to say. Um, but I think we've, there's been lots of conversation going on between Wild Salt and, and the office, um, staff. And I guess we would like to see, we would like to see a less complicated, I mean, had they been able to build the building they showed us for what we had originally said?
Fine.
I was all for that, because it was a beautiful building.
Same here.
But we're seeing that that's not the case.
May I comment on the potential building size uh decrease? Uh, for the footprints, uh, some of them is space that we lose, or it's more considered optimization. Uh, office spaces are proposed to increase, so we have more space in our workstations or offices, so there's a little of a miscommunication too between office, office and workstation.
Mm-hmm.
They're proposing workstation, so it's individually workstation for you to do our work. And there's offices that where you uh have room for meeting with, 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 with the public and other people, so they have a group setting. So there's a little difference, what we didn't understood, understood very late in the game. And other changes, proposed changes are losing uh hallway space that we only use for passing through. So it is more of a optimization of space that we're using. The usable space that's necessary to do our work is increasing. The space that we're gaining for meeting, not with this public, uh, boardrooms, all that stuff, it increases. What we're losing is hallway space. That's what they're proposing so far. So if we talk about small footprints, I understand it's, it sounds, uh, doesn't sound in the direction you wanna go. But it's an optimization of the space, how we use it. This is it.
Anybody else? Yes.
I just feel as though, when I made this motion, I felt as though there was a lot of study that went in to what Alan wrote here, or C A O, I'm sorry about that, wrote here for us. And I just, you know, we can pass the buck or whatever and say, you know, that building was out of what we were ready to pay for and all that at the first, what was designed for us. I feel as though as a council, we underestimated how much this building was gonna cost us from the first. And when we put those figures out there to the public, they said, oh wow, that, you're getting a new building for two million dollars or so, and got everybody hyped up on it. But I feel as though we have to take some of that blame as well, cuz there was just no way we were ever gonna put that building up. Or practically any other building for a municipal office for two million dollars. And that, so I just, big reason I made this motion, I just wanna see it get on. Uh, I don't think any of us ever said, build it nice no matter what the cost. We always said we want a nice building. But I, we are, we are, you know, uh, very conscious as to what the cost is gonna cost the taxpayers. It's as simple as that. But at the same time, I, I don't know if we're in a position where we should start right from scratch again. Uh, we have, I would say, don't know, we have a foundation in right now, but I feel as though uh, we may have a start of one, um, and go from there and work on it, you know, and, and hope. That's the only thing I was a little bit leery of. I hope when I made this motion, that we are not gonna be back here uh in a couple of months' time saying, no, we need more money. Cuz at the same time, it has to stop somewheres, and we have to show people, the public, that we are, um, trying to do the best we can with, you know, the money we have to work with, but at some point in time, they'd have every right to come here and say, come on, you know, where does it stop? So I'm honestly hoping that we went a little over this time, and we'll say we've come in a little under, you know? I, and I don't.
It won't be over. If you give them this number, they're gonna, they're gonna scrape it. We all know that. It won't be under. No building ever was.
But at the same time, it's better, I guess, than scraping it, than going over.
Yeah. I'm just thinking, if we would've gave them these numbers in the past, any building they could've showed us, none of us would've said, that's it. None of us would've said that by looking at plans. You, you can throw a few shrubs in front of a building and make it look nice, but I think if you were said, you can build that and stay within the budget, we'll be happy. So now we're trying to downsize, and I think we're gonna be right on that fine line. I'm just concerned. If you had one long rectangular building with a couple of shrubs and a nice rock face in the front, make it look nice, just one long rectangular building with the same square footage and the same uh potential, business potential and efficiency as these rooms that are currently in this building, we'd stay within budget.
I'd, I'd like, I'd go ahead, but I'd like to address that.
Mm-hmm. So, so, un- under what you're, would like to see happen, are you still staying with the net zero?
I'm fine with net zero. Totally fine with net zero. And, and I, and I appreciate uh Council Muse's point with selling that to the public. That was an opportunity that came that, that made total sense, and yes, the, the cost of the building is way higher, however, we're getting a lot of the funding and that. No, I'm, I'm all for that. Um, I'd like to hear what C A Muse has to say, actually.
Um, I think you'd be surprised what the cosmetic changes that you're suggesting, how much little impact it would have.
Really?
The biggest driver of cost in this project is in fact the net zero. And so, and that's, that's why the gas tax can be allocated in, in its, in the extent of its doing. I think that if we didn't have the five hundred thou, and I'm just gonna be as plain as plain can be, if we didn't have the five hundred thousand dollars from the S E M G M F, it would absolutely not make sense to recommend a net zero. We would've done a reduced net zero uh capacity, right? So the thing is, is net zero energy is net zero energy, right? You can get very efficient buildings and not go all the way to net zero, right? And so I think, I think uh the reason why it still makes sense, and I will, I will say that this, this is a recommendation that's coming from the architects. It's certainly a recommendation that we also support because of the cost savings over the life of the asset. Like, I think we'd said it was like three million dollars over forty years that it would save now, give or take five hundred thousand, but still, that's a big amount of money. So, so that piece still makes net zero uh, uh, energy uh something that we should potentially strive for. It was certainly confirmed by the project manager that we had, um, that we, we engaged for, for a minute uh under Wild Salt. Uh, he said it's close, but it's, but it, it certainly, because you have the five hundred or four hundred and sixty three technically, it does make, uh, it makes the number make sense particularly moving forward. So, um, I hear what you're saying, and in fact, what you might find is that the design that you have in your mind might be closer. You, you might in fact see that it, it is gonna be a lot closer to that.
Okay.
Um, it won't be a square, the, like, you know, or a rectangle, the way that you're potentially picturing it. But the, a lot of the um pomp and circumstance of the design w- will be eliminated. Um, and I, I know that does not necessarily change how you feel about the budget number. The budget number is, is still high. Uh, most of it is in fact driven by the net zero uh component, which I would still recommend despite, because of the saving.
No, I do too, future. I do too. All right.
Okay. Have we discussed this enough? Are we ready for the question?
Question.
Question called for. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contradited? Carried. But it is an important issue, important topic that we have to discuss.
Yes, it is. And from my perspective, uh, I can, I, I, I appreciate the, the, the informa, I appreciate uh hearing exactly how people feel around this table, around this project. You know, this project did not go the way that we had planned, but there's two things that we need to remember here. One is, the longer we wait, the more expensive it'll be.
Yeah.
That, that, no, and I mean, the cost of construction is just, you know, it is moving in the opposite direction. Uh, number one, but the, but the, number two is that, uh, uh, while we have set a budget that's slightly higher, we will be pushing for uh the, the most changes possible to reduce the, you know, the, the flamboyance, if, for lack of a better term. Uh, we did ask for larger offices. I will say this out loud, we had sixty-four square foot offices.
Eight by eight.
Eight by eight, in some cases. Uh, they were quite small. We, uh, they, the way that they are designed, it makes it sound really small. I shouldn't say it exactly like that and stop, because the way they had it designed with the doors, there was, there was a lot of, of rooms saved. So, but it was a very small uh office, and so we, we made those changes and we, we made efficient, tried to make efficiency changes in the, in the design. So you will have the opportunity to look at and completely criticize, compliment, make changes to before it goes out to tender. So to your concern around budget, you'll have an opportunity to address it directly once you get a draft in front of you.
Okay. Good. We'll move on.
There was two motions as part of that R F D.
I'm sorry.
There was two motions as part of that R F D, so we need the first one.
Yeah, I'll move to request the lead project consultant to provide a revised designing breakdown of the budget cost, considering amended budget for council's approval.
Did you second it?
Mm-hmm.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Here are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Contradited? Carried. Thank you, Ailie. I missed that one. Uh, the next item, National Building Code of Canada, two thousand and fifteen, volume one, post-disaster building exemption status for new municipal administration, administration building. And this is for decision. So, do you mean national or, because it, I wasn't sure what, exactly what, what that meant.
Uh, it, the request is, so, um, this is a request in reference, it's probably not, well, this is the new administration building. So I, my understanding of the request here, and I'm, and I may have just misread it, is, is that we want to um, request that the post-disaster construction requirements uh be exempted for this construction, otherwise the cost will be through the roof.
Okay, so.
Is that your understanding, Ailie?
It is, yeah. So the building code that John Sullivan has, he needs exemption status from council based on the building code um reference that we have.
Yes.
Uh, because the new municipal building is not considered an emergency response facility, because we have comfort centers potentially as well as the in-house locations, uh, fire rescue, police stations, and housing for vehicles, aircrafts, or boats, and communication facilities. So the new municipal building doesn't fall under those three, but he needs exemption status from the local municipality in order to make it official.
Okay. I wasn't sure, it, you know, I thought that what, I, I didn't think you had to ask for exemption. I thought you, 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 you asked for it, if you, you know what I mean? Like you, that, that if you didn't ask or say you were gonna build that, that you didn't need exemption, because you weren't gonna build it, or you're not obligated to build.
Well, with certain buildings, you have to, the council has to make a motion to, to exempt from that status.
Okay, okay.
And so you, you'll be faced with that same decision when the Eelbrook Fire Department goes into construction mode, because you'll be faced with that same, that same exemption.
I wasn't aware of that, so that's why I wasn't sure.
So you need a motion to, from council, to uh exempt from post-disaster to the new building, new, new municipal building?
Correct.
Is that what you need? Based upon the both building code, right? Yep.
Okay, so moved. Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any questions? Here are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contradited? Carried. Next one is cost sharing program regarding Birch Drive for paving. And that's cost sharing with the T I R. Because it's a J-class road, and we have to, we have to pay our portion.
Well, um, yeah, I mean, I think what happened was, we received a request from the residents that it was in deplorable posi- uh condition, and, and at the time, we had asked council permission to apply for funding. Not actually making the commitment, whether or not we were gonna execute that, not think, I mean, we didn't realize what the probability of success was. Well, there you go.
They accepted it.
Um, so they accepted it. So you still have the choice to agree to do this this year or not.
Or not. Exactly. Because they, they're only gonna do the Birch Drive. They're not gonna go around Riverside, Riverside Drive. I was on that road, uh, I was on that road this weekend. And, you know, I mean, Riverside Drive has a lot of potholes as well and whatever, for sure. Uh, to me, from what I, from what I saw, Riverside Drive was probably in worse shape than.
Which is which? Where, where does one end?
As, as you come off uh, uh, Highway three thirty-four, that's Birch.
And where it takes a ninety-degree turn, that's where it turns into Riverside.
Right at the end, it, it turns, yeah, and then, and it loops back to Birch.
So they're, they wanna do just the straightaway down to the corner or fly the ball?
Right to the corner. It's point three kilometers to the, to the corner. But they're saying, the letter says that they are not prepared to, to do both, but that we could reapply to do the, the, the rest of it at another, in another year.
It's a star, it's better.
Have you ever done this before?
I don't remember. Not since I've been here.
No.
It's the first time I've ever done this.
Well, probably back when it was done, Department of Transportation or T I, maybe, who was in T I R then, Department of Transportation probably paid J-class roads.
So it would've been a, a, a service exchange that would've occurred in nineteen ninety-six or ninety-seven.
Okay.
At that point, you became fiscally responsible for J-class maintenance.
J-class. Right.
They are technically still in ownership from the department.
Yes. Yes.
And so when capital projects occur, we clearly wouldn't have had an occasion necessarily to, to, to do paving on these, on these roads immediately after the transition.
Sure.
Uh, presumably, they were in reasonable condition at the time. Um, so this, this is really the first time that we've ever really received a request to do a J-class.
Yes.
And they are cost shared, just like this. I know it's done in other uh communities. I know Barrington uh has a list as well.
Yes.
Reached out, and they certainly have um roads that they cost share. This is gas tax eligible.
I was just gonna say, can we, like, where does that?
It would be gas tax eligible.
That would be forty-seven five hour, hour share.
It was in the ten-year project, production.
Yeah, and again, I didn't presume that you were gonna say yes or no to this, but I just, I, I wanted to, to, to show that if you said yes,
Right.
here's what it looks like. It is gas tax eligible.
The list just gets longer and longer. We need to do. Or should be, and quit doing that.
Should go with.
You know what I mean? Like, holy, that's another forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
That we have to find in the budget.
Right.
That, well, no, because it can be, it's.
Gas tax, but still, but it takes away from something else.
Gas tax budget. Yeah, it is, would be in the gas tax budget.
Yeah.
So just remind council that right now, you have about one point eight million in your gas tax account. And you get three hundred and sixty a year. So you have managed to save some in anticipation of some of the larger projects.
Yes.
But uh Council Albright is correct, the project list is growing.
Yes.
And it's regular and local.
That's right. And that's not the only J-class road that we have in our municipality. And as we know, like every other road, that we don't have to cost share, they're all pieces, same as the J-class roads.
So, so we don't have a strategy on this type of uh replacement?
Right.
This is a, this is a happen-to-be, is it okay if we ask, and the council said yes?
Right.
And, and they said yes.
And then they said yes to our ask.
Now what, what do we do?
No, I think that my point to the municipal building was that had the building remained in our budget, we'd have money to spend on stuff like this. We own a part of that road, the road is deteriorating. I make the motion that we do it.
We had a second there.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, discussion.
The big reason I second that motion is I just feel as though if we don't start taking care of some of these roads that we are uh responsible for, partly responsible for, that it will just get out of hand, and all of these roads. And that we'll go to pieces, and we'll just won't have enough money to, to do anything for them. But right now, I feel as though we may be able to start, you know, maybe that's something we may have to look at, is a plan. Is a plan uh, in place to take care of some of these roads. And that we'll spend X amount of dollars each year, whatever, to to put back on these roads.
I'm just afraid we can't afford to do that. Can we afford to do that? Cause like, when I think about the roads in our municipality and if we have to start.
Yeah.
Putting big bucks into like, and I'm not saying that we don't, like, people deserve to have decent roads, but that's another provincial thing in my head. That I feel like here we go again, and I'm just thinking like, I know even in my district, I I don't say that they're J-class roads, but. It's gonna trickle down. I'm getting calls all the time about. The roads in my municipality, and they are, they're in horrible condition. That's what I'm thinking, can we afford to do that?
But but the the roads, are they J-class? Wait, that, no, not at all, but.
But people don't understand that all the time, so. That's, I know, I know where this is gonna go. I know where the phone calls are gonna go probably tomorrow. So can we make a list of all our J-class roads?
We did, we we seen it.
I think we do have a list. We we've not analyzed, uh, certainly. We're not in the position necessarily to accurately assess the useful life of J-class roads. That's not our line of business. We can arrange to make that happen. The 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 political question is is a debate for for political. I I would I would add on on the motion. That's being uh, that's been put on the the table. Birch Drive uh, does uh, connect to one of our business. Uh, I should say residential zones, so we still have. I believe maybe two or three lots that could still be sold in that area. So I I'm not, it it it's just a, I'm not trying to sway a a decision, I'm trying to inform a decision. So. So this particular um, uh, investment would would fall into Riverside Drive, which does have some lots that we. Uh, we have sold some recently, but haven't uh, haven't sold all of them.
So if we approve this, would this be, so you said gas tax eligible, are we talking about the whole chunk? Like now, right? I I'm just curious how that would work.
I I I'm the, being the first time that we've actually received a a a green light on this. Being the first time we've actually made this request and then had a green light.
Right.
Uh, I think it's just simply a billing. They do the paving. And they bill us. So it's there, it's 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 provincially led, it's it's basically a contribution from our offers to theirs.
Any more discussion? Are you ready for the question?
Question.
Question.
Question called for, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Contradicted? Nay. I guess it's it's approved.
The only thing I would like to ask, being as though we're talking about roads and all that. Um, I'd like to see us try and get some of the supervisors or managers or whatever. From TIR back here again, cause honestly, that is the biggest complaint I get as council. Is the roads, the shape of the roads and that the lack of salt, the lack of plowing.
Yes.
Uh, we had a couple of them sitting in here on the uh. Might have been the thirteenth of September, I'm not sure. But anyway, they said, oh, call in, you're gonna get tag numbers. And uh, we'll look into it. I have tag numbers here that I'm keeping track of. I've called, I've re-called and that, and nothing's happening, not a thing. So as far as I'm concerned, if the people watching feel as though that we can do anything for them. With Department of Highways or TIRs, they wanna call themselves now, I'm afraid we can't. Cause I don't know how much they can do for the people, so. It's just falling on deaf ears by the by the looks of it.
This is and for another, a topic for for another.
I know, but at the same time, we gotta get this another time going, I think. Cause if not, it's just a topic for another time and nothing, it looks like we're doing nothing to help them. Thank you.
Well. We're doing what we can to help them.
Well, maybe.
It's not, it's not our, it's not our jurisdiction. All we can do is 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 report. If it doesn't get done, we've done our shit, we've done our part.
But maybe we should push a little harder then, you know.
We're gonna agenda topic for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you, would you like for us to uh, reach out to the, it it is, I'm hearing it's the will of council to have that happen?
Yes, it sure.
At the most recent council meeting, is that what I'm hearing from?
Yes.
From this group.
Years ago, and I don't know if it's happening now, the supervisor for the municipality of New Armagh. Went to the meetings on a regular basis. Not every, not every meeting, but there was a schedule. That he had to go to the meeting because that's what they had requested. And every three months or so. He had to go to the meeting and and to to hear their concerns and explain what had been done. We never got that when I was there from our daughter. So I think that's something that we should have on the schedule that. On a, on a regular basis, whether it's three months, four months, that they can come here and explain to us and we can give them our concerns as well.
There's no way something wasn't drastically different this year with plowing. Something was different, has to be.
Not, not as good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we didn't have the manpower.
Is that, uh, we'll let them tell us, but some something has.
Something, exactly, exactly. And I feel as though we have to get them in to tell us what's going on.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh. Are we, we're okay with that? Just now, computer timeout. Next one is the approval of policy reimbursement for attending meetings and conferences. I, I went through this again. And item number twelve, and I think I brought that before. And I just wanna clarify, when you're traveling to FCM. And there's different, there's different for different zones, and I realize that. It'll, it says that the conference, okay, eleven hundred dollars, okay, for one, eleven hundred dollars will be provided to the council member. Or employee attending conference to cover all of their travel related costs, mileage, airfare, et cetera. I thought that mileage was not included. I thought we had discussed that and we had said that. We still had mileage to go to Halifax to get to the airport.
That you were paid the mileage to go to the airport? I I understood that as well.
Well.
Yeah.
This says that it's included. It will, it will cover all of their travel related costs, mileage, airfare, et cetera. And I think that's a point I had dwell up before. And at that time, it was said, oh yeah, that that's, that's a mistake, that shouldn't be there. But then now I see it's still there.
That should not be.
I don't think it is. I I think the mileage is supposed to be taken out.
It is. In fact, I think there's another provision in in this policy that addresses that specifically, or at least I thought.
It addresses it when you go to the uh, uh, NSFM, because it's always mileage. We don't fly to the NSFM. And it says that on every one of them. Yes.
I've I've looked this over too before and I've talked Ellen. Uh, we, we can go to nine point four A, B. And just eliminate. Number twelve point one, FCM conference expense payment. Uh, it's my understanding if you're going to a certain time zone, you get a certain allowance for basically airfare. If you don't use all that in your airfare, that's money left over. In your pocket for another, lack of a better term, that becomes taxable, right? If you have eleven hundred dollars to fly to the Pacific time zone and you found a super deal and got a ticket for five hundred.
Gonna get the eleven hundred, you're only gonna get what costs you for the ticket.
The lower cost.
That that's been, that's that's another, that's, there's another clause in there that you you. You can get up to eleven hundred, but if you spend twelve, you're gonna get eleven. If you spend nine, you're gonna get nine. You have to produce receipts now. And if you don't produce receipts, then it can become a taxable. That's the way, I understood it.
So why not, why not just adopt number nine point four, air travel for any conference other than FCM? And have the staff book the flights. Like I don't understand why FCM singled out.
FCM was singled out because of the fact that that, okay, my my understanding is that. It was singled out because of, we used to get the same amount no matter where we went, right?
Yes.
Where where we found that we couldn't, we couldn't fly in some of the areas for for that money. And it costs us a hell of a lot less than what we were given for others. So that's, there there's three sections there in nine point four. Uh, not nine four four twelve, sorry, twelve. Twelve point one A, B and C.
Yes, the initial reason why we separated the FCM conferences from general air travel, which by the way, we almost never travel air travel unless it is.
I don't, I don't remember it ever.
I don't think.
I think Aldrick went to France or something once, I don't know, but.
Yeah, and I think it was paid for by somebody else, yes.
Somebody else, yeah.
Um, and so that's, that's true. So there, so really like since two thousand and six, other than for s- for a trip, a trip that was paid for by somebody else. We've never actually traveled by air unless it was for FCM.
Right.
So um, the reason why FCM was singled out was because initially we wanted to limit or or cost control.
Yes.
Um, the the flights, um, and and I say we council at the time wanted that. So uh, the changes that we're proposing, we're proposing, um. We we did intend on including the mileage as a reimbursable expense.
Exactly.
Not included in the eleven hundred, nine hundred and six fifty.
That's right.
Those were intended to cover airfare.
That's right.
And airfare only.
Yes.
So there is a word there that should be deleted in your final if you're, if you're prepared to do a final. Um, I don't think anybody's gonna, oh no, that's not true, I was thinking NSM. So uh, so that was the reason why we showed it separate. It's the will of council, so whatever you wanna do, I I would um. I find when it comes to flights, the practicalness of us booking the flights. To suit individual schedules is problematic.
Yeah.
It's one thing to book a hotel because you know you're gonna be there from X to Y. But the flights sometimes have a lot of personal uh, arrangements and sometimes, of course. Uh, the spouses are joining, which of course the spouses pay, but then that depends, depends, depends. So I I would from a, it's an administrative perspective, caution against asking us to book the flights. Uh, but the warden is right, you can. You you don't have to do something special for FCM. You can just simply say it's the economy airfare. Uh, however, you know how it works, right? The economy airfare on day thirty is not the same as.
Nope.
Day ten.
Mm-hmm.
So it's hard for us to manage that situation and. And say, well, you waited to the last minute, so we're not gonna reimburse you or or et cetera. So we're, I think the point is we're trying to. Trying to standardize that to some extent.
So when you book, when you book a flight. And you book it where there's no returns, like you can't, like it's, you fly or you die type of thing, you lose it, right?
Yeah.
To 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 get to the, to get to the funding model that we have here. Like there's, there's, we'll use Quebec City for example, there's no direct flights. I booked in January and I watched it for a couple of months and I couldn't get down. To the, to the suggested amount paid out for for an eastern time zone. Uh, on the dates that we had to go. And I'm sure that's part of the problem is the date, right? There's no good to go three days early and stay six days after. So, um, to me, it's full of flaws, like. There's, there's, all other municipalities, I'm sure. Booked their flights for the councils down at FCM. You have a date you're leaving, you have a date you're coming back. Uh, with help from a counselor or or the staff checking it out, can find the best available flights for those. Two days, basically is what it is. It's it's not hurt in my mind.
Well, I'm I'm certainly getting the sense that you're not prepared to make a decision on this policy. Uh, staff is happy to go back.
I'm one voice that has sticks here, so I mean, these guys, the rest can decide what to do, I just find it difficult sometimes. And and we all don't go to FCM every year and I haven't gone quite a bit lately, the last number of years, but. When you do go, I don't like booking my ticket in my knee at the cheapest possible price I can find it. So I would be covered under the policy we have. To get sick or something happened that you can't go. Then then you're not gonna be reimbursed by the municipality, so you're out the money.
That happened to me when I had to cancel my flight to my, my FCM to Ottawa.
But don't you take insurance?
Let's see that.
Insurance doesn't cover just, just the fact that you don't wanna go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you, were you actually out the money or did you get a brochure for another flight?
I got another flight, but it was, it wasn't.
And you have to pay extra for that now.
And, yeah, exactly. Plus, you don't get a hundred percent.
But what would make a difference if if the staff did it or if you did it if you.
Cause it would be, then the municipality would lose.
Well, they would book the flight that was covered for reasons like that, that would be refundable.
Yeah.
I I booked non-refundable flights because that's the only way you can get within the parameters we've set out for ourselves.
Cause when you want a refundable flight, then you pay extra for that. It doesn't come free with the, yeah.
And and I know in this particular year with Quebec City, you can't get there direct.
No.
You're taking multiple flights. It's proving to be right away. More expensive than the allowance we're trying to change in the first place.
Yes.
Um, our intention from a municipality's perspective would be that you're not out money. By going to a conference.
I think what you guys are trying to say is, let's say, you know, I think the, what you guys are trying to say is. If the allowance was twelve hundred, you shouldn't get twelve hundred dollars regardless of what you pay for your flight.
Correct.
You should get the different, like, the lowest price. I think that's where you guys were trying to go, but what I'm hearing is that.
You can't even do it.
The numbers that are here aren't necessarily working.
No.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, it could work for some areas.
Yeah.
But in this particular incident, the FCM, it's not working. And and I would say that you're you're right. I don't think that any, any uh, uh, councillor travels. To a conference to represent the municipality should be out of pocket money for. At least, I mean, if they spend while they're there, that has nothing to do with the conference, that's that's one thing. Or or if I bring my my wife and, you know, you can't expect that we're both, you're gonna be out of pocket money. But I I think that in a case like this where you cannot find a flight for that, for that amount. That and 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 we're saying that you're not gonna get paid what you pay for your ticket, you should get paid for what you pay for your ticket if it goes over. And you know, make make a specific, or or special circumstances is what it is, right?
Yeah.
Especially if you're choosing economy flights, not like you're flying first class, it's just in.
And that's a whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. So so from my perspective, I'm less comfortable uh, bringing this policy for your approval based on the feedback I'm receiving.
Yes.
Uh, you you are not rushed to make.
To do this.
Uh, an approval on this. We will dig deeper and get additional information and we will seek your counsel before putting it back on the agenda.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, now we had a subcommittee of policy development. We haven't used recently because most of them were just cleanups. So this might be one where we would require both staff and council, a small group. To sit together and iron out some of the details. And I would suggest strongly that you're, that the warden be involved. Because the warden has had, uh, he he has a lot of experience in 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 this type of trouble.
Yes.
So if if you don't mind, we can just simply.
So we can table this one for another, for another meeting.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to table or?
I think it's appropriate to table a mo- to to put a motion to table or to defer to.
To defer to another, yes.
Calmate the motion that we defer this second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Contradicted? Carry.
I moved it in the whole second.
On Nicole's second.
Thank you and and forgive me for not having it to you. Yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it right.
Yes. Destruction of documents. So after so many years, we can, we can, we can destruct some, we can, we can get rid of some of the documents. Destruct is not really the proper word.
Destroy maybe?
Destroy. Did I say destruct? Destroy documents. Uh, except there are some that we cannot destroy.
Yes. So.
I was saying destruct instead of destroy, sorry.
We're, we're raising this issue uh, because we do have um. we will have um, one year further in destruction. I think Ellie, if you have, do you have any details? Is it John that put this on?
It is John, yeah, we do it every year around this time of year, and there's an affidavit that I have as the motion in my minutes. And it's sustained every year, so it's just approval from council to be able to
Move.
Destruct the documents based on the policy attached to the end.
It's moved. Seconded, moved and seconded.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
No seconding, sorry?
Yeah? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Controverted, carried.
So it's up to the municipal clerk to list these documents upon destruct, prior to destruction in that regard.
It, it did say destruction.
It did.
But you said something afterwards, destruct the documents or something.
This, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Schmidt La Pree, request for letter of support, Department of Transportation.
Go move. Seconded.
Okay, there's, there was a petition there for reasons, but the reasons are, are pretty good. Were you gonna take that Ellie? Did you talk to Jeanine or do we have to discuss it? It's moved and seconded, by the way.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be discussed, I just have a thought that I could pass around, it's pretty straightforward, yeah.
It's pretty, it's, yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
And the letter of support you didn't can take directly to Chris Dantremont and he's gonna hand it in.
And he's gonna bring it in
Yes.
To the Halifax, the, uh, office rather than do it through this office.
So I'll draft a letter and then I'll just get the normal process.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, controverted, carried. Where am I here? Request for appointment of El Louis Boi- El Budro Louis Budro as building official and bylaw enforcement officer. And we had discussed that at our last meeting of what we've, or did we, did, did we do that in camera, I wasn't sure.
Um, well, it's, it's, it's certainly not. Absolutely, Louis was internal, uh, internal application for the building official who is the succession, succession plan for John. Louis Budro was successful and he will be trained in that capacity. We are now advertising for the wastewater uh, position.
Okay.
Which was his former position.
Yes.
I would recommend that in order to conform to requirements that we need in, in the plan. Uh, for building official and bylaw enforcement officer for Louis, and that has to come with you.
And building official is, is really a, a, um, part-time because just to train him for, for, it's, it's looking, it's looking ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're naming him as the building official, he's actually not certified to do
No.
And sign off on building inspection until he is certified by the, the, the education.
Right, so we need a motion for that.
I'd like to make a motion that in order to confirm to legislation, legislative requirements that Louis Budro be appointed as building official in training and bylaw enforcement officer for the municipality district of Argyle.
Moved and seconded.
The department of building officials necessary for him to become full member of the Association of Building Officials.
Right.
That's why.
That's it.
Okay.
Discussion?
Question.
Question called, all in favor?
Aye.
Controverted, carried. First reading, amended Tuscan water wastewater bylaw thirty. And this is just the, the first reading, we can't uh.
There would be a motion required on the first reading.
On the first reading.
But it has to obviously go through the process of advertising.
Exactly.
Um, Hans is here to answer any questions or concerns you may have. The changes that have been made are highlighted
In, in yellow.
In yellow, most of the changes are cleanup. There is one big reason why we're bringing this now. It's one of the steps necessary when we're putting a public road in to the location of our admin building where intent, our intention is to put in a road and that road would be a public road. So it would be, uh, it would, it would access the back lot as you have already indicated that that is a priority of this council. So in order to do that, we had to in, we had to expand the wastewater management district to include um, the proposed uh, location municipal road. So that uh, map is on page twenty of the attachment and you can see where it says proposed municipal road and, and the increased uh, square footage or, or map that includes it inside the district. Without being in the district, we cannot actually bring the sewer.
Bring it to sewer to, to that location.
I'll second that. Aren't you comfortable with this, this document?
I'd like to, just, yeah, uh, so it's just mostly cleanup. I added one provision that we allowed to, or the council allows to create a policy to deal with any technical details in the future, which makes the process a bit easier, I think. Uh, I just added a few clarifications on the definitions. Uh, I changed on the, the application to connect uh, the wording that says now the thousand dollars per connection fee, which is the original connection fee. Uh, and use, use the, discard as, the connection fee as per equivalent unit which, which would in certain cases exceed the two hundred thousand dollars. So some, certain businesses have a higher usage, so they would pay more for the basic connection fee, which is not what we're actually practicing, so this is just a cleanup that we only charge a thousand dollars per connection fee, not even that.
Okay.
Uh, also allowed for a temporary disconnection during construction which wasn't in there before, so I created a schedule D, an, an application form disconnect or hemorrhoid disconnect. And we have the option to waive the connection fee. Originally, if you disconnect, uh, we had a few situations that there was accidental destruction of the property. They had to, they were forced to disconnect and if they had to reconnect, they would repay the connection fee. So this is just to help the residents in case they wanna do changes to their property, to building. So it's in a, a provision to, uh, not have to pay that as an unfair disadvantage. And then we cleaned up the map and we included the property. The only thing I would like to point out is, is one property that's now included in the new management district, which wasn't included before. Because of the, just the distance of the way we run this, uh, the district is three hundred feet from the central road. Some of the roads, the direction is the sewer district. So it is required to hook up to the sewer if you're within the district. Now with changing the, the map, one property in particular is, is now the option, or it would be required to connect. They're currently using an onsite sewer, I assume. Uh, so there might be necessity to give them extension, whether it's always to connect one, not, or not connect. So council should be aware of, there might be, you know, a little bit of an issue. Either way, you can extend them and go around their property. Or we give them the option to, the client council to stay as is and not connect, or they wish to connect, it's totally up to them, so. Well, not totally up to them, but we should leave it to the owner and include them in the process when we advertise.
Okay. So there's motion, any dis- any questions or?
Question?
Question called, all in favor? Controverted, carried. Correspondence and for information, developed Nova Scotia shortlist for pre-qualified internet service providers. I'm just gonna go through them and if you. Municipality of Claire approval of funding for Stephanie St Pierre, oh, that's the, that was the what we discussed earlier, right? No?
Yes, that's the confirmation that Claire has given the full.
Exactly. Department of Municipal Affairs, federal gas tax program. Lyme Disease Awareness Month. March twenty nineteen building permit report. Mayor's Center Management Authority resignation notice. Now, do we have to, to reappoint someone and?
No, um, so this, this was an interesting timing, so we had just put uh, a new councillor
Oh, yes.
As the member of the mayor's center.
Then we thought that maybe we.
And we were scratching our heads to say, well, which, which uh, individual should we ask? And uh, just so happens that one is no longer going to be living in the municipality and so this resignation, so I would suggest that there would be a motion to accept that resignation that could be done here along with a thank you for his service.
Can we do that? We can do that now?
We can do that, yeah.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Controverted, carried. Waste Reduction Association Nova Scotia Sharps Campaign Press Release. Water shortage proposal response from, from Minister Porter. We discussed that earlier.
No wonder I couldn't find my emails as a there.
Letter of support provided to Yasta for the, uh, Nova Scotia Music Week bid for twenty twenty, twenty one and twenty two.
And I would just on that, uh, Mr. Chair, I would just say that the decision to fund the music week bid uh, has not been made, be brought to uh, council, uh, budget deliberations. Because it's from a sister company, they don't have to apply to our grants organizations process, but if you recall, Neil McKenzie did a presentation and I believe it was a ten thousand dollar request that could be paid in two years and if you chose to do it over two, this would be year one.
Letter from Cheryl Glant, Member of Parliament regarding Bill C sixty eight, her concerns. Street light for residential park, that would be me. I put that on there because I just wanted to bring them up, bring it up. They've applied for streetlights in the, in our residential park. And they were denied due to the fact that they didn't meet the, uh, our, our policy on streetlights. They still claim, I've gotten calls again, and they still claim that that corner, when you go down, to go down the hill and then there's kind of a ninety degree corner that it's a little dangerous there at night, there's no lights, there's no streetlights at all in the park. So they want to know, and apparently they were told that the only way they could get that was if we changed our policy to include. Now, changing the policy, we have to be a little uh, careful. Unless we're ready to, depending on how we change it, we would have to be ready to accept probably a lot more requests, depending on how we change the policy. Are we ready for that or are we not?
Don't we have a dark sky designation?
Just thinking that, yeah.
And the, and the light from Tuskit is starting to get brighter according to Mister, what's his name?
Yes, but, but it's not streetlights. It depends on the kind of streetlights that you're gonna put in, right?
But still, it's still gonna be light.
There's gonna be some light.
Yeah.
But, but there's some light that doesn't affect the starlight designation, depending on the kind of lights, which is, which is, well. Municipality of Yarmouth and the Town of Yarmouth, I guess, were all kind of forced to put new lights. They were not the right lights. They are really, really not the right lights for, for that day. It's, it didn't, it, they, they, they put them in because of the lifespan of these and whatever and the new technology, but it wasn't the type of light that the starlight designation would have liked to have seen. Anyway. I said I would bring it up again. Whether or not there's any way that we can, we own the park, I don't know if that makes a difference. We have, we have one light in the, in the business portion of the park. I'm pretty sure, right at the beginning, okay? And I guess.
That's ours?
That's ours.
We actually own the streetlight?
We have about
Four, we're about six.
I'm gonna go with six or seven this morning.
I thought they were emergency, mo- most of them were for like emergency and.
Yes.
Yeah, we had three or four before we passed this policy.
Yes.
Uh, that were either taken over from TIR or for whatever reason, some of our own. Like we have streetlights on our own property, protecting our own property that we pay for. Uh, so those, so the current streetlight policy says unless there is a, uh, uh, a considerable concern, emergency, uh, et cetera, et cetera, uh, we don't pay for those streetlights. It would, it would be a residence, residential uh, responsibility now. The policy does not express any form of uh, collaboration, you know, like so. So for instance, you know, I'm sure there are, might be some individuals that say, hey, look, we're, we're willing to pay something for a streetlight, but we don't wanna have individual streetlights everywhere and we can't, we can't force a location of the streetlight if it's not on our property.
That's right.
So, so some may want to see that, uh, the policy doesn't address that. Uh, some may want multiple streetlights uh, for sidewalks, the policy does not address that right now. Policy doesn't allow that to happen. We have had two requests, I believe, two, maybe three, that we approved. One was in Wetchport at the crosswalk for the school, where the crosswalk is painted every year. Uh, they felt like, uh, there's, you know, high-speed traffic, school, kids, so, and, and the RC, RCMP. One of the criteria is that the RCMP says, you know, kinda comes in and says, yeah, there's, you know, there, there's, there could potentially be a danger associated with that. That's where I think the request of the residential park of Tuscan failed. Is that there's very little traffic there.
Yes.
And so I'm, I'm not, I'm not suggesting they're wrong around the corner, the corner can be a little, you know.
That's right.
It can, it has its issues, right? Um, so certainly they, they're, that's a legit concern, it just doesn't meet the criteria of our street policy.
So for me, it doesn't meet the criteria and I actually agree with putting a streetlight there, but I agree with putting a streetlight in a lot of residential areas, right, and I feel like it's something we should look at in the future, if we can. It goes along, for me, it goes along with sidewalks. Something I feel like we should
Be looking at.
Be looking at, yes.
From a perspective on terms of for the road danger would be bollards or streets, like signs that are reflective to, at least mark the edges of that road. So on a street light, you could have signs out there which are, it doesn't cost them any money, go for it, send it up.
Right.
To, just to address that, these concerns and make the road safer for them.
Right.
And, and what councillor LeBlanc said, I'll back him up one hundred percent there. I honestly, I spoke with CAO News here a week ago or so. Uh, I've been getting more pressure uh, from people down home that want some streetlights along the sidewalk and in certain areas of, of West Publico, Lower West Publico. I plan on holding a public meeting the first or second week of June, if all goes good to get input, public input and to let them uh, guide me as to what they'd like me to do for them or what I may be able to do for them. So I, it, it will definitely be coming up in the near future, I believe. So.
My concern talking to rural municipalities that do put up a lot of streetlights, I believe Barrington's one of them and it's a very costly, costly endeavor. Cause everybody's gonna want them, they're gonna, we want them in every district, we're gonna be wanting them where they're not needed. And it's just opening up a can of worms, we've gotta wait for years, if people need one bad enough, they can put it up themselves, which they do.
I'd, I'd like to know now how many municipalities in Nova Scotia don't have streetlights? Or versus how many have streetlights?
It's definitely, if, if we were to do streetlights like the municipality of Yarmouth. And what they do is, is if, if, if there's a, a bunch of houses, they won't put one at every, every location. They, they, they'll skip a pole.
That's right.
And then when there's a whole section where there's no, there's no houses, there's no streetlights.
Exactly, yes.
Anyway. You know, so it doesn't look like we're gonna be getting a streetlight for these people. I, you know, I mean. I, I think changing the policy is, can be, can put us in a situation where all of a sudden, we get, we get a lot of requests for, for streetlights.
And, and the dark sky designation of my mall for that and I respect that a hundred percent. But I feel as though for safety now, security reasons, uh, there has to be a happy medium somewhere.
Well, there can be because it's, it's a type of light that, that's installed. It's not, it's not to put this great big lights that are lighting the sky, it's just, it's, you know, depending on the, the, the strength, you know.
Lomens.
Lomens, yeah, the strength of the bulb and whatever, yes.
Uh, so the Tim Doucet to, uh, went to great pains and, uh, and effort to research and, and bring to our attention what, what is a lighting or dark sky bylaw.
Yes.
We've received legal opinion on
Yeah.
On it, uh, we technically cannot enforce. We've received legal opinion on, on it, uh, we technically cannot enforce a bylaw. However, any discussion on streetlight policy should, uh, in, in my mind, because of our investment in the dark sky, really should incorporate what that bylaw is saying, and, and, uh, and say, if you're gonna go down the road of, of investing in streetlights, which has not been identified as a priority this year.
No.
I just wanna make sure that everybody is aware of that. If that's something that's gonna come up in the future, that needs to be a decision of council, because we're moving on priorities, we got like three big ones we gotta move. So if you wish us to change the streetlight policy, um, certainly it's, it's a motion away for us to look at it. But I'm just warning you that that's not on the higher priority, and would have to, other things would have to be shifted or changed at the will of council for us to hit that one fast. Um, you know, by all means, if there are public conversations around streetlights in communities, I'm not suggesting that, I'm not saying that that, uh, that what I'm saying would influence that in any way, shape, or form. My only concern would be it's gonna take us time to do any sort of major change, because we have the fiscal implications of a change in policy, number one, number two, you have to consider dark sky, and number three, we have to understand what the, what the community is willing to pay for.
That's right.
Because right now, it's not incorporated in your residential taxes.
Exactly, but I believe though if a community wanted it and went within the area of race, uh, they'd be able to get lights if they wanted to.
And certainly if it was a hundred percent cost recovery, or virtually a hundred percent cost recovery on the service of that, um, that could certainly inform your policy.
Exactly.
And, and so council may be okay with it, as long as the users are paying for that service. But then, you know, begs the question, who is the user?
Yeah.
Right, is it the person living on a sidewalk, or is it people using the sidewalk, how does that get determined? So as you can imagine, it's one thing to change the policy, it's another thing to answer those questions to get to that place.
Yeah.
And I respect what council's thinking about, and, you know, safety, security, all of those things are very, very important, and so if you wish to change priorities through the year, um, we're gonna, it, it will, it will be something that we'll have to
Okay.
look at in, in the near future.
The next one is mobile watering truck garage construction, and that's a tender. We opened up the tenders, there's only two bids, and I guess this is public.
Yes.
Who, who bid, whatever, so we had one from Graham, we had one from Garyan, Garyan was the low bidder. And have they been notified, uh, that they were bidder?
Yes, they, they've, they've been notified, and, uh, we, uh, the recommendation coming from Hans to myself and to you is to deal with the low bidder and negotiate
Negotiate.
the price, because the price is currently
Higher than what?
higher than the original budget number.
Yes.
So we believe that there's a little bit of room
Yes.
um, to just, to construct a little bit less incentive.
So we don't need a motion on this, at this?
It's for information.
Information only, okay. I don't like this band. Joint Municipal Fire Service Committee broken, training. Unsightly waste bins, Mr. LeBlanc.
Yeah, um, I brought it up, uh, a few meetings back, but I missed the last one, so we pushed it back to today. I gave you all some time to think about it, I had a resident raised to me, and it was just one resident, however, uh, I thought maybe there was some validity to it, he wanted to, uh, express that some of these bins are unsightly and they're near the road, and maybe that poses an issue for potential tourism and things like that. I just wanted to see what council's feedback on possibly pushing them back away from the road, like, not getting rid of the bins completely, but moving them away from the direct roadside as a, as a bylaw.
If you move them out too far, if they're leaving their garbage in there and the, uh, roadside pickup goes in the box and, and rather than putting their bags on the side of the road, put, push them up too far, they will be missed, they won't, they won't go out of their way too far to, to, to go in these boxes.
Yeah, I think that the, the point would have been made to, you know, on garbage day, you'd have to go put it.
You'd have to go put it out.
I don't know how council feels about that.
Well, they're also saying five meters from the edge of the roads, within five meters of the empty roads, they have to pick up. So if your box is within five meters of the roads.
They're supposed to go pick it up, okay?
That's what I'm saying, yeah. And it's almost responsibility to keep the area tidy at all times, so, there's a lot of work to do.
This, I know on a windy day, when my, when my, uh, recyclables happen to fall a little away from the shoulder, I have to go pick it up the next day because they don't, they don't bother going. And it's definitely not within five, and it's not a ditch, it's just a little bend, man.
So I'm just trying to understand the issue, is the issue the unsightliness of the bin?
Yeah.
Or is it that the bin is out there too long and therefore?
No, it's not a bin.
Sightliness of the bin.
Yeah, but it's not.
You're referring to the green bin?
No.
Homemade boxes.
Homemade boxes, oh.
Homemade boxes.
Alright, I wasn't clear.
The town of Yarmouth rejected them. The town of Yarmouth rejected their use of any con, so maybe that's where he got his motivation from, but, uh.
I just wanna hear council's opinions on either pushing them back or?
I have never had a complaint of the.
That's the first time. Me too, I've watched it before, I've never done.
You don't mind.
And there's everything from wire teeth ones to nice beautiful wooden ones, and I don't know.
Maybe we can defer, if, if you do hear feedback now that it's been raised, we can look at it back?
Yeah.
Okay. Letter to T I R regarding Drummond High's consolidated school sidewalk. They're asking for, really what they're asking for is for T I R to to widen the shoulder so that at least they have a place to walk, because now from the school to the Argyle Head Road, apparent to the shoulder is so narrow, as it is in a lot of areas in this, in this municipality. That, but you have kids from school walking apparently, and you're right on a, a corner there as well, and they have to walk on the pavement. So really, they're looking for a letter
Yeah.
letter from us, or a letter of support from us.
Yeah, that's the, that's the route they have to follow for their emergency planning exercises.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it should be widened or something, so I'd make the motion that we write a letter su-support and then send it to the. Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Contraminded, carried. It's a long meeting.
Transportation.
Financial requests, we have none at this point. Anybody agenda topics for next meeting or notice of motion? Question period, anything on the internet? No. Scott is saying no.
No.
And we have an in-camera session still to go through.
Motion to go camera.